On.
There we go.
Oh.
Evening Jenny, Brad, Dr. Time.
Ah, Dr. Time.
Good evening, everyone.
Dr. Time is on.
We can't hear you, John.
All right, we're live on YouTube.
Okay, it's 6:30. Wayne, we're ready to go. Good evening, everybody. The March 30, 2021 regular school board meeting of Roseville Schools ISD 633 is hereby called to order. Clerk Johnson, could you please pick your role, please?
Chair Bogushevsky.
Here.
Treasurer Goggins.
Here.
Director Chu.
Yeah.
Director Anderson. Okay. Clerk Johnson is here. So I'm going to try one more time. Director Anderson. Okay, might be having some technical difficulties.
Yeah, I think he's having trouble logging in. He texted just now, so we have four.
We have a corps.
We have a corp, so we can go ahead and proceed. Maybe we'll talk slowly to give him a. Right me down. Do we have any agenda adjustments tonight, Mr. Superintendent?
There are none, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements or comments from those who are in Zoom at the moment? Seeing none. There is no community member present, Mr. Superintendent and/or Michelle, who received any letters to read for community input tonight.
We have not.
Thank you. With that, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, less gifts and retirements.
I'm moved. No, go ahead, Russ.
And then a second.
Yeah.
Curtis, you want to second it?
Second.
Sure, all right.
Can you guys, can you hear me now?
Yes.
There you go.
We can.
Sorry.
No problem.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be able to zoom in, so this is gonna have to be a phone call. Sorry, guys, I'm having major difficulties here.
Okay.
Good start.
Thanks, Todd, for letting us know. Then with that, Curtis, could you share some retirements with us?
Sure. Oh, do we, do we need to?
You can vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. We need to approve the consent agenda. My apologies for leaping ahead. I'm just so looking forward to when we can all be here again. Curtis, could you please take the vote for the consent agenda approval?
Of course. Director Anderson.
Aye.
Director Chu.
Aye.
Treasurer Goggins.
Aye.
Chair Bogushevsky.
Aye.
And Clerk Johnson votes aye.
Now, let's move on to moving for retirements.
Clerk Johnson. Okay, we've got two retirements today. Joan Kerr Decker, who's been an avid tutor at Roseville Area High School, and Beth Murphy, health assistant from M D Williams. All told, they have thirty-five combined years of service to the district. I am always amazed and impressed by the devotion that people show to the district, so thank you for your service. So I, I move, we accept the resignations, retirements, retirements.
Nice second with deep appreciation for the service they've provided, making difference to our kids.
Absolutely. Let's, could you do the vote again, Curtis?
Director Anderson.
Aye.
Director Chu.
Aye.
Treasurer Goggins.
Aye.
Chair Bogushevsky.
Aye.
Clerk Johnson votes aye.
Thank you. Move on to gifts. I think this evening has, as has probably been true for every school board meeting for the last hundred and seventy-five years, and Dr. Time could probably affirm that. Maybe not quite that long. We do have some more gifts to share with folks tonight. So Director Goggins, could you please tell us what those are?
With pleasure. Central Park Elementary School has received from Ronald and Joan Taylor funds and items of winter clothing for students in need. Parkview Center School has received two gifts, one from the Parkview Center PTSA, which is funds for a classroom grant, and one from Metronics, the Blackbaud Giving Fund Your Cause for using for principal discretion. Roseville Area High School has received three gifts, one from the Roseville Girls Basketball Booster, funds for an additional coach, from Randy Doll LLC, funds for the wrestling program, and for the girls hockey booster club, funds for additional coaches. So thank you, everyone, who's contributed to the district.
Thank you, Kitty, for sharing those with everyone. With that, we'll move into our first reports and not action items. And first up, looks like a review of the current learning model plan. Dr. Sikoli, are you going to be sharing that with us tonight?
I will just give the lead in. Josh Collins will present on changes that have occurred since the last meeting as we implement our learning model in this ever-changing pandemic year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Josh.
Thank you, Chair Bogushevsky, board members, and Dr. Sikoli. I'm gonna hit share on my screen here. Okay, are you able to see the presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so once again, thank you for following along as we share with you kind of the latest on our learning model. We know that there are often parents who might be joining us who haven't had the benefit of seeing these presentations going along. So I always like to start and remind folks that there are many factors we look at when we're deciding our learning model. And the way that the state has asked us to weigh these things has changed over time. Early on in the pandemic, the number of positive COVID-19 cases in Ramsey County was really weighed very heavily. And part, really in the early stages of the pandemic, this was a determining factor of when we would shift models. Now, this is less of a weighted item, and actually, if you look at what those original guidance lines are in terms of cutoffs, we're really not following those as closely, and that's true for all districts. That's kind of the state has, has really learned over the course of this pandemic that young people appear to be affected in different ways than older people do in the COVID-19. So that is still, continues to be one factor. We have, of course, consult regularly with public health officials with both the county and the state on the effects and transmissibility of COVID-19. We have our own experiences, which have grown considerably as we have done contact tracing and come to understand the various ways in which having a positive case or a close contact can impact our buildings and the programs. We also have to make sure that we have staffing capability to serve both our distance learning students and those who are coming in and learning in person. And then, of course, feedback from our families, staff, and students to our various committees and other channels. To give you kind of the latest on the numbers, the vertical line back on February 9th, that shows you where we were back in early February, and we are almost exactly right at that same number, right just under twenty cases per ten thousand residents over fourteen days. I'm sure you've all been hearing in the news that there is a bit of a surge, again, perhaps not to the level of surge, but we are seeing numbers increase. And we are, of course, watching that. You can see the forecast, April 4th is up to nearly twenty-five. So we do expect to see these numbers increasing along with the rest of the state, and we are watching that closely. If you look at just the zip code serving our school district, you can see that we're at about twenty-two as of March 5th. Now, the state's legging rate, which is two weeks behind where we are today, this is at twelve point eight. So rather, that's, yeah, that is two weeks. So we expect to see that number, of course, go. Our current learning model is, we have all of our elementary grades learning in person. We, of course, have the Distance Learning Academy as an ongoing option for those who choose it, and we are in the process of examining what distance learning options we may be able to offer in the fall, should there still be interest in that. We have not arrived at a decision on that, but that is something that we are considering. And we are looking forward to having a second opportunity to bring elementary students back in person for those who maybe weren't ready at the end of January or for that first transition, and now with vaccinations being more prevalent, we do know that some additional families will come and begin learning with us in person on April 19th. If there are any family members watching here this, this evening, please notify your school by are interested in transitioning or changing those learning models. The exciting new news for us is March was a big month for returning secondary grades to blended learning. They really have not been in the building for a year, for more than a year. Right after spring break, on March 15th, we brought back students in grades seven through nine. And then on March 22nd, we brought grades ten through twelve. That was an advancing of one week from our initial plan, which was March 29th. Of course, we still offer full-time distance learning for those students in secondary who their families believe that to be their best option. We have had a number of requests from families to consider, are there ways that we can bring students in the building a greater number of days, specifically in the secondary grades? We are looking at that. There are a number of challenges. Of course, Roz is still under construction, and we have to make sure that if we have a one cohort model where we're bringing in more students, are we still able to maintain the necessary spacing? Does it disrupt any of the spaces that we have for which we're not able to replace with outdoor activities, that sort of thing? So we expect to share more information in the near future with both you as the board and other members of our community about those opportunities. That's the end of the presentation. Have my colleagues here, who would be able to join me and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Josh. Any of my fellow board members have any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Rose.
Yeah, thank you so much for that presentation. It was, it's a great summary, and I mentor one of the students in Abbott, and oh my God, the excitement. Just, it's like a different person on the phone that I was checking in. It's like a completely different person. And it's just excited to see what, what difference that made for some students who've been struggling. Yeah, who's been struggling. Thank you so much. So my question is, what percent both in elementary, in the lower grades versus the upper grades of families who still choose to have students in the distant learning model, the all-distance learning model?
Dr. Laker, do you know those numbers?
I was gonna say, Jake, do you know those numbers? I believe at the elementary level, we're at about sixty percent choosing blended learning. And just well that at the secondary level, really similar numbers, anywhere from fifty to about sixty-five percent choosing blended.
Choosing blended, okay.
Yes, that's, that's accurate. And it, and it really, I mean, that's the average overall. It really depends. There's a lot of variance between our sites as well.
It might be interesting to, like, maybe get an update on that, kind of, you know, kind of just get the understanding. Like, for example, for, for families, even this elementary, they have an option to be all in person, right? So yet, there are many of them who choose blended. So it will be interesting to understand reasons as we think about. I'm sure you are thinking about that, like, what happens in the fall, what options we provide in the fall. So just, just a wondering I have.
I appreciate that. And to clarify, too, when I say blended at the elementary level, that means fully in person. So there's one cohort of students attending school every day, five days a week, or a family could choose distance learning. But at the secondary level, we have two cohorts where students attend school two days a week and then learn from home three days a week.
Okay. Thank you.
And we certainly can plan to do a future presentation because we'll know a whole lot more at the elementary level after this next round of transition and communication with families in two weeks.
And, and the reason is more to understand, right? What, is there a pattern? Is an access issue? I don't know whether there's plan to really try to understand how, what, what are the implications as we learn more, what the offerings are, I think, as Josh mentioned, for the fall. Thank you.
Good evening.
Could you comment on differences we're seeing by different races of students? Or if that is something you'd prefer to comment on when we get more additional information in a few weeks?
I could probably answer that. Chair Bogushevsky, Director Goggins. We did get a question on that and have pulled data. Minnesota Public Radio is looking into this in districts all around the state. We do find a discrepancy or a disproportionality. So overall, about sixty percent of our students are choosing the in-person option. However, white students are far more likely to be choosing the in-person than Asian students. I've done surveying, and I should say, the difference is about seven out of ten of white students. So seventy percent compared to about forty-six percent of Asian students are selecting the in-person. For our other student groups, racial, ethnic groups, they are all pretty close to about the same with sixty percent. Now, there, of course, could be a number of factors that play with that, ranging from our ability to have adequately communicated the options to our families, and we know for some people, written communication isn't as effective as other methods. So we're trying to reach out with our cultural liaison and also through texts and using translated services in order to get that message out. Now, of course, another variable in there could be the tendency that we have seen in the COVID era for people to feel racist and discrepant behavior or not, not behavior, but perhaps experiences that might be uncomfortable because of the rhetoric that we have seen around the country surrounding COVID. We don't know if that's a contributing factor to making people feel less safe or perhaps less interested in coming in person, but we are interested in knowing that better.
Thanks, Josh. Any other questions?
I have another one.
I would like to comment on that statement real briefly, if it's okay.
Sure.
Just because I'm in the building and I've had conversations with a lot of our families that are distance learning, most recently because we are going to be administering MCA tests coming up on April 13th. So I've had to reach out to all of our kids that are in distance learning, and we've only had maybe two hundred students want to come in the building to take this test. And that's basically because they still have a fear of what COVID provides for people of color. You have a systemic issue that are attacking people of color, and just that fear, they just don't want to put their kids at risk, especially at the secondary level. So we just, we, we, we give them grace, and we understand that because easing that fear is, is most important for us.
Wow. Thank you for that. I have another question, Mike, just another one. Just, just wondering how teachers are doing? Given all the transition that has happened, given kind of like juggling kind of the changes that has gone on. Just wanted to, if anyone, you can comment in general, how, how, how are they doing?
Well, I can, I can give some context, and then if Principal Hester, Associate Principal Woods would like to give further comment, they certainly welcome to do that. We had our Labor Management Council meeting with representatives from EMR today, and morale is good, and I think up and increasing, and really is measured as with the vaccine rollout. The increases we've seen has increased a greater level of safety amongst teachers. Chris or Drew, any thoughts?
Well, I think the fact that how we have changed our models and given them the time and giving them the resources has been very imperative for us. Not rushing into things, but also just, what do you need? Let's take time to do what we need to do to make sure you're going to be as successful as you can in the classroom. We, we, this, we're entering our third week, second full week with, with all of our kids in the building. When I say all the kids who have chosen blended and cohorts one and two. And there, I, if anything, they are feeding off of the energy that the kids are coming in with and vice versa. Kids want to be there. They're still walking in with their caribou, but they have their mask on, which is a good thing. But there, they just, they just, they just definitely want to be there, and that's, and that is a very critical thing for us.
Yeah, I was able to meet with middle-level lead teachers, so some, some representatives from Rams and Parkview, and, and they they were, this was after the first week that they had students back and very excited just to have the energy and the, the life back into the building. So it was great to see. They were very, feeling very positive about, about things. I mean, obviously, there's tweaks that they need to do and some of the systems and things like that, but overall, they said it was just, it was great to be working with students in person again, so.
Good to hear. Just heartfelt. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you to all the teachers. This has been, I know it's been hard on them, you know, and just always thinking about how this is impacting them and the toll that is on them. So thank you for all of you who are supporting them.
I, I second that, and I think, you know, we, we still don't know what it's going to be like in the future. We still don't know what's gonna happen. We don't know what restrictions will be eased or lifted or still in place. So, you know, if the distancing requirement is still in place, that will be a challenge. And, you know, somebody wrote the word "challenge." I think it's not just a challenge, it's, it's an outright barrier to, you know, capacity issues, so. Anyway, any other questions or, or thoughts? All right, well, thank you for that, and we'll move on to the next topic. And I believe we have Roz Principal Chris Hester, Associate Principal Drew Woods, Career Navigator Bryn McConnell, joining Director of Teaching and Learning Jake Von DeLinda, and Assistant Superintendent Jenny Lake in the presentation of the College and Career Readiness Report. Take it away.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us. If, thank you, Michelle, for sharing your screen. And then we'll be sharing the nineteen-twenty College and Career Readiness Report. The next slide is to show that, of course, college and career readiness is reflected both in the World's Best Workforce Initiative and in our focus area four of our district's strategic plan. And with that, in the next slide, it's my distinct privilege to introduce or reintroduce Ms. Jenny Allen to the board and to our community. Jenny's dedicated work as our first and only College and Career Readiness Liaison set the district on an immediate and upward trajectory for success. Here's some background as it relates to Jenny and Roseville Area Schools. Jenny and her husband have been Falcon Heights residents since nineteen eighty-seven. Both of their children went to Parkview and Roz. Nick graduated in two thousand nine, and Catherine graduated in two thousand thirteen. I was fortunate to get to know Jenny and her family during this time as Roz's principal. Looking back the past twenty-five years, here are some examples of the different contributions Jenny has made to the district. She's volunteered as a math coach for thirteen years, including Math Masters and Junior Math League. She's volunteered as Junior Great Books Coach. She has served on the DCAC for three years, assisted with district-level planning for the Gifted and Talented Program, and has been very active in Parkview's PTSA. And with that, I'll ask Jenny to now highlight her work as a volunteer, part-time, full-time, College and Career Readiness Liaison for the district. So we're very, very grateful for Jenny's work.
Thank you so much, Jenny. I'm, I'm so grateful to be here and to be invited, and it's, it's just great to see all of you. It just makes me smile to see all your faces. It's been way too long since I've seen y'all. So Jenny asked me to just highlight some of the accomplishments of what we were able to do in this last year. So I, I thought about one of the things that I really feel, feel best about during the year and a half in which I was, worked on this, this project. And the first thing is the people. I said yes to this project, just simply because Jenny asked me. I'm such a big fan of hers that she could have asked me to do anything, and I would have said yes. It would have been amazing to work with her. But what a treat to be able to meet the incredibly dedicated staff and, and the talented people who work in this district. Chris Hester on this call, Andrew Woods. Thank you so much, both of you, for all your incredibly dedicated and skilled work on behalf of all of us. And in terms of what we're able to accomplish, just a couple of things. I feel really happy that we were able to establish and maintain the, those vital relationships with, between the school district and the businesses. That's, that's such a big part of, of being able to do career and college readiness. And then I, I'm also glad that we were able to create a brochure that highlighted all the amazing, strong career programming that already exists in Roseville, and it gave us a tool to actually go out there and talk about the things that we're already doing so well in the district. But I think the thing that I definitely feel really the most happiest about is that we, as a group, were able to secure the funding, to be able to hire Bryn McConnell as our, our full-time new career navigator. You know, if there's anything that I've learned in this, in the year and a half that I worked on this, it's that when a, a district champions career and college readiness, everybody wins. The students win, the families win, the schools win, the businesses win, and even the whole state economy wins. So I am just so proud to be in a district that recognizes and supports this really vital mission. My hands off to all of you. I thank every one of you for your support.
Thank you. With that, we'll turn it over to Jake.
Thank you. And so all of our school board reports are connected to our strategic plan areas. And on this slide, we've identified some of those connections of the areas in our strategic plan. And the two main ones that we connect to this, to this work that we do in college and career readiness is improving that learning for our students of color, American Indian students, English learners, students receiving special education services, and pre-kindergarten learners. And then also, obviously, expanding that support for our college and career readiness. And some of those areas are really looking at providing a curriculum that reflects the cultures and families of our students, and then also providing that safe, challenging, and equitable learning environment so that students feel safe in those classes that they're in. And all of those college and career readiness things, we had to shorten them up, but just a few of them. Expanding opportunities and removing barriers or obstacles for high school students to obtain college credit, and as well as expanding some of those mentoring participation and opportunities. And you'll hear more about some of those as we go along in our, in our presentation tonight. And I'm gonna turn it over to our Principal Chris Hester.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here. Want to say, Jenny, just from, was it, feels like two years ago, and it probably was two years ago, just the work that we started and getting us on our way and really making sure that we were staying on track. And with that, as you can see with our college-bearing courses, this is a part of that journey. And one of the things I really want to point out is the difference between having concurrent courses versus articulated courses. We have our Advanced Placement Courses, which is governed by the College Board. They provide a curriculum. They make sure we have our syllabi that are aligned to what they need for students to take the AP exams. And then we have And then we have what we call college in the schools, and this is uniquely to the University of Minnesota Twin Cities. And basically, these are the classes that we offer where students can get a college credit if they get a C or higher in the class. And then next to that are concurrent enrollment where we partner with St. Paul College, Hennepin Technical College, where students are able to get, once again, the college credit, the, when you have a concurrent enrollment, teachers do have to have a master's in the field or a master's plus eighteen credits in the field. Whereas an articulated credit, they just, they just have to have a master's. But with articulated credit, the students do have to attend those colleges in order to receive it. And so we're finding ourselves that concurrency is really the way that we want to go and we've been trying to move in that direction with our partners. But what comes along with that is making sure our highly, already highly qualified staff have all the things that they need, such as the master's plus eighteen or the master's in the area. And we've been having some really good dialogue with human resources about how do we do this better to make sure that we are making sure our teachers are prepared and our students can get those college credits. So, you know, what you see here, we're going to try to expand as we have more teachers get qualified to run concurrent courses with our partners that we currently have.
Thank you. And this is a slide that shows, we're going to talk a little bit about some of our college credit bearing courses. So Principal Hester talked a little bit about what those courses are in that previous slide. And this, this is a representation of the student enrollment. So the left side, the chart on the left is our twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. So last year's student enrollment by race and ethnicity for our FAS or for our Ross students overall. So these are all of our students and they're broken down by our different racial or ethnic groups. So American Indian students at about point five percent, Asian students at twenty point five, Hispanic students at thirteen point one, black students at sixteen point nine, white students at forty two point five, and students who identify as multiracial at six point five. And on the right side, you can see that is the percentage of students that are in college or college credit bearing courses. And again, by the race and ethnicity, and you can see how closely those are mirrored. So we can go on to the next slide. And this just actually shows that proportionality or the representation. It's the same information as the previous slide, but just shown over the last four years and into some proportions. So again, a proportionate amount here would be one point oh. Above one point oh means that a student group is overrepresented and below one point oh means a student group is underrepresented. But you can see here that most of our student groups stayed very consistent with the previous year and are very representative of our student population. We do see the largest change over time, especially with our students who identify as multiracial from more of an overrepresentation to a more representative, representative proportion. And some of the counts do vary quite a bit in terms of the, the size or the counts of, of students within these, so they can move up and down quite a bit, especially for American Indian and our multiracial student groups. We can continue on to the next slide. As another course area that Principal Hester talked about is our Advanced Placement or AP courses. And this is just some summary data. And you can see there is on the top line, the, the total number of AP students that we had participating in courses in AP last year. The number of exams that were taken by those students. And then the, the last one is the, the number of students who had a three or higher score. And that one is, that is included because typically colleges that provide credit would provide students with college credit if they have a three or higher. Now it really depends on their college admissions and how they look at that. But you will notice that the number of exams is down over the past year and that I believe in my hypothesis is because of the pandemic last spring. These tests were given in spring or May of twenty twenty and they had to be provided to students remotely. And I'm, my guess is that many students didn't participate because of that. And also, you know, partially because of the school year being interrupted. So it, it is hard to compare twenty twenty to our other years in previous, previous amounts. However, I did notice one thing that was kind of a standout to me was the number of students that had a three or higher was much greater and the percentage of students that were receiving that was much higher too. So that was exciting. I'm not sure if that had to do with a different administration of the test or, or something like that. That would be my first guess, but that is something that was a, was a positive takeaway as well. So we can go on to the next slide. And this one is looking at the, the test participation by race and ethnicity and just looking at counts. And you can see that we were actually trending higher in our counts through that twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen in terms of students that were students of color or are BIPOC students that were participating in the test. And then that did drop off last year again because, I believe, because of the pandemic and the different different causes that, that, that came about with that. So we do believe that we would see an increase continued in future years as we get into more normal learning model conditions. So you can go on to the next slide. This is looking at our, our scores, our AP scores compared to average, averages for the state and also the nation. So these are our students in blue for Roseville area schools. In Minnesota, those are in red and the nationwide scores are in green. So you can see our, how our students compare. I noticed that most of our student groups performed above that national average, but below the state average. Our white students and multiracial students, although they did perform both above our state and nation. What isn't shown here though is some comparison of last year's scores to this year's scores. And we did see Asian students, black students and multiracial students increase their scores from that previous year. Our data does, does still show that there is disparities between our white students and our, our BIPOC students. And continuing on, this is actually an ACT update and I wanted to let you know that we actually don't have scores for twenty twenty. That was because we actually, we did not take the test. We did not administer the test in twenty twenty. So I really wanted to take this, this slide to look at the bottom half of the slide in that second box there that talks about the different plans that we have for this upcoming, for, well, for this spring as well as next year. We have to provide students a chance to take a, a college entrance exam during the school day and at school. And so we will be offering the ACT to our, our seniors from this year, who we had hoped to offer that last year. But that was during the pandemic. So we were, we did have to cancel that. We had hoped to reschedule that in early October of this year. But again, we were in distance learning and pandemic situation again caused us to want to postpone that. So we did postpone it to this upcoming April. So in just about two weeks, we'll be offering that ACT to our seniors, those class of twenty twenty one students. Next year's seniors, so the class of twenty twenty two will be offered another opportunity to take the ACT during the school day on October fifth of next year. And then the junior class next year, so the class of twenty twenty three will be offered an opportunity to take that ACT test in March of twenty twenty two. We don't have the exact date on that yet. But that will be coming. So just wanted to update that there is some changes that are coming and also let our community know that we are going to be offering that as, as the hopefully pandemic subsides and we'll able to continue to have more in-person opportunities. And I'm going to pass it on to Chris Hester and Drew Woods.
The slide that you have in front of you is about our career and technical education and those are our CTE courses that you will find, such as our, our construction trades, our auto, our print, graphic design, photography. And I'm, it's really small, so I'm really trying to see it. But what you actually see are just some of the trends that you see for our students and how we are really trying to trend upward for our students of color taking these classes. I'm going to let Mr. Woods kind of really talk about some of the things that he has done this past year, really. And even during the pandemic of how we can introduce not just our white students, but our BIPOC students to career fields that, that necessarily need a four-year degree, but also a two-year degree. And the addition of Career Navigator, that has helped us a lot with our partnerships. Bryn has really continued on the partnerships that Jenny Allen has started for us and really has opened up avenues for our students and for our staff to see what else is out there for them and how they could succeed. So Mr. Woods?
Greetings, everybody. Sorry I didn't mention that earlier, but, and I want to echo Jenny, thanks. It was a pleasure coming in and going to these meetings and meeting our community partners and going along with you. And thank you for the work you have done to, to springboard us on this journey. Yes, as you can see, our main, one of our, one of our focuses to also provide all our kids with this opportunity. But we also want to focus on students of color who may not want to go or obtain a four-year university. As you know, college may not be for everybody. So truly, as an educator, we want to make sure we can meet the needs of all of our students. And that means making sure kids who may not want to get, obtain a four-year degree can be work-ready and, and into the workforce as they leave high school. Some of the things we have done, and I can't take credit for this, Bryn has been amazing. The addition of her has been awesome and a relief for, for everyone. I'll say especially for me, but it, it's been great. She's been a big help. So Bryn has been very intentional and making sure her focus is kids of color. She's held office hours. She has visited classrooms, our EO classrooms in specific and, and has done career inventory interest surveys with our students. Our EO students have really enjoyed that meeting with her one-on-one, just to gauge. And then she takes that information and she goes into the community and she, she reaches out to community partners in manufacturing and automotive and construction and also in the culinary field, just to see, to gauge and and to match up, match a student with the specific workforce industry. So we will continue that in our efforts as we, as, as next year, we have a lot of things in the workings to where now we will bring in industry partners to come in to meet individual days, to meet with specific and have our kids sign up. So if we have a culinary arts worker coming in and our kids will have the opportunity to sign up to come visit with them for their morning. If we have a construction trades person, they'll come in to meet with them and to get more, to learn more about the job and so on and so on, as with manufacturing and with automotive. So those are some of the things that we have been intentional with and that we can continue to do outside of the pandemic.
In this next slide, Jake had talked about just a representation for students of color with one point oh is meaning that we are proportional with the number of students of color in our building. And if you look at the trend data going along the bottom, where you see really an increase in our multiracial students. You see a one, one, and then all of a sudden it drops, it jumps to a one point five. And to stay anywhere, I, in my opinion, anywhere between point nine and one point one or one point two, we're doing a really good job of pulling kids in and holding on to them into those career fields, which is what we need to do. You know, you talk to any businesses, one of the things that we are recognizing and I would have to say we're one of the few high schools in the metro area that has maintained their traditional, at the time would be IT department, but we have transformed that to career and technical education because that's exactly what it is. We are looking for students to go into those fields such as automotive, repair, construction, even graphic design and photography and culinary arts. That is a testament of our teachers and also what Drew has laid down on top of what Jenny laid down. And now with the addition of Bryn as a career navigator, we're reaching more of our students. Even this year with our registration process, our, our electives, what some people call electives, our facts, our CTE department, they're full. Those classes are the classes that kids are taking, our business classes. And, and they, when we gave them their numbers, they're like, this can't be right. This can't be right. It's like, no, it's right. Somewhere during this time and during this pandemic, students saw the importance in doing something a little bit different and, and we need to capitalize on that and making sure that we're providing them those opportunities. So I, you know, I'm literally looking forward to the twenty twenty one numbers to see how we're not just maintaining that, but also surpassing it and making sure we're providing the right workforce for our community and for our area.
And, and our next work and our next task is to provide a scope and sequence. We want to be able to lay out for our kids, here's your pathway, here's your line, here's your entry level course, here's your intermediate course, here's your advanced level course. I'm currently meeting with Century College, St. Paul Tech, Minneapolis Community Towers, Hennepin Tech, so that we can try to align our courses that fits right into the two-year course. So kids will be able to obtain that credit. Can you imagine a kid leaving our building if our teacher's ASC certified and a, and like one of our kids can have that ASC with automotive service and they can go right into the workforce and become an auto, auto mechanic? That is great to have a kid being able to leave high school with that certification and possibly make sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars a year. What kid wouldn't want to explore that? I mean, so you look at it, even our kids going to a four-year. As we know, when you come back for a four-year, you still have to find a job and, and, and we are just trying to find a ways outside of that traditional, go to, go to school, go to college, then you come back and you get a job. That, we want to break those traditional, traditional trends. So that's kind of where our work is headed and that's going to be our next task to tackle. The NEEM Grant, this is something that we initiated last year myself and Jenny was a big part of this. When we started and we kind of took it, but it, it was on pause because of, because of COVID. So we are partnered with our NEEM Grant Northeast Manufacturing Education Grant provides us with an opportunity to where in the summer, we do summer internships and we created Roseville Raider Works, which is our internship program for, for manufacturing. So we will be able to place twelve of our kids this summer in the internship with the manufacturer partner that we are, that Bryn is currently working on. And, and they're going to also provide our manufacturing teacher with the OSHA ten training certification, which is very key. This will also allow our kids to, once they're done in our manufacturing class, he can certify our kids with health and safety regulations, which is a big obstacle right now for us, the reason why manufacturers are hesitant with, with bringing in a sixteen or seventeen-year-old for an internship. So those, once our kids obtain that, they'll, they'll have that for the rest of their life and be able to take that into the workforce industry, which is huge. She's also working on a promotional video. And so she's, she's continuing to work on that and I'll let her address that more when we introduce her to everyone on the screen. The brochure that Jenny spoke about, here it is. These are just some of the things that we want to make sure we provide academic year opportunities. A lot of, a lot of times, a lot of schools that have the same similar programs don't have the academic year opportunities. I know they have OJT, but we want to make sure our kids can have these opportunities, internships throughout the year and not just only in the summer. Mentorships and also with the job shadowing, we will have a manufacturing day. Abbott, Abbott Laboratories who have, has agreed to bring over sixty kids over for a manufacturing day to just tour their facilities, provide them with an in-depth look on, on what that means. That's industrial sewing, that's all type of manufacturing, shipping and, and also just, just, just building. It's, it's a great opportunity. We had a chance to tour the facility and it's awesome. It's very awesome. So without any further ado, we will introduce Bryn McConnell, our new career navigator.
Hi, everyone. I'm so excited that I get to be in front of all of you virtually. I am Bryn McConnell and I'm the career navigator at Ross. It is so exciting to be here. Ross is a really special place and there's a lot of amazing things happening here that don't happen a lot of other places. And so that's very exciting and such a gift for, for our students to be able to, you know, have exposure to all these kinds of career hands-on opportunities that a lot of schools are kind of fading away from. We're really, we're really flourishing. So it's a really great opportunity for our students. And so I just want to highlight a few of the things that And so I just want to highlight a few of the things that um, that I have done uh, so far this school year. Um, I started my position in August. So since August, these are some of the things that we've been working on. Um, I send out a monthly newsletter that highlights um, some of the various things that are happening within the CTE uh, world. Um, cool opportunities that students have had, highlighting projects that students have made. Um, I also try to hi- highlight a specific um, career pathway. Um, just to kind of give stu- students and readers of the newsletter, which could be business partners, school board members, um, families, all kinds of different people. Um, just to give them idea of what are some opportunities within this area that students can pursue post-high school. Um, so that gets sent out every month. Um, I also do weekly Zoom office hours. So um, I choose a topic for the week and it could be um, doing a career interest inventory with students. It could be highlighting a particular pathway. Um, I've done one on apprenticeships, which went really, really well. Um, so I post that opportunity on Mondays and then Wednesdays I have students come in via Zoom um, and share information with them and do a lot of questions and answers. I've had students tend, I've had a couple of parents even pop in, um, which is pretty cool. So um, those have been going really, really well. And I think as more students kind of get um, get used to that idea, um, I think it'll just continue to grow. And like uh, Drew had said, we are really focusing on providing opportunities for our students of color to to enter into the CTE classes. Um, so I've been partnering a lot with uh, with EO. I've spoken with, I think at this point I've spoken with every EO student in the building, um, which is pretty cool. I've gone into a- and all of the eighth graders, actually. Um, so that feels really cool. I've gone into the EO Career Seminar, which is for all graduating seniors that are currently in our EO program. Um, so first trimester, I did some career exploration with them and I'm currently in the process of doing um, one-on-one conversations so that students have a tangible plan for um, after graduation. So um, lots of really great work there. Um, I also have um, partnered and connected with our special education department. Um, the work experience coordinator is just kind of figuring out how we can kind of work together. There's already great work happening um, and how we can work together as a team to continue to provide opportunities for our students post-high school. Um, and I've also partnered with our connections program. Um, in addition to all of those things, I've also gone into lots of classes. Um, I've visited different CTE classes. Um, I've gone into the Woods classes quite a bit. Um, we actually had a, we have a female identifying section of our Wood, our internal Woods class. Um, and I went in there a couple of times during first trimester and we had a panel of um, female architects, carpenters and engineers um, that spoke with our girls and um, that was amazing. Everyone was like glued to their screens. It was a really cool thing to see. Um, so I've kind of partnered uh, in on those things. Um, and I've done a lot to highlight a lot of those non-four-year degree career options. So I think a lot of our students, um, the model that their parents maybe went through in that generation was like, you go to high school, you go to a four-year college, you start working and you're really successful and you buy a house in a couple of years and all of that. That is not the way that the world works anymore, um, even without COVID. Um, really, that, that traditional path works for eighteen percent of Minnesota students. So if we focus on that, we are missing eighty percent of our kids. So um, so really what I, I, I'm super passionate about providing all kinds of options for students so that they really can see like, oh, I could do this. This is exciting. There's options for me if I don't want to go to a four-year university. Um, so doing a lot of work with that um, has been really cool and I've had great conversations with teachers and students alike about like, whoa, I didn't even know that was a thing. And to kind of see that spark light up in their eyes is so fun. Um, like I mentioned, I also worked with the eighth graders at Rams, um, who were registering for classes for high school um, and shared with them all kinds of different opportunities that we have, those hands-on careers and um, again, like the questions that they asked were incredible, so insightful for eighth graders and um, I think we're going to have a whole lot of, whole lot of students taking those hands-on careers. Let's uh, let's, let's hope that. Um, and then addition to um, the work that Jenny Allen uh, started and then Drew continued, um, is doing a lot of connecting and building partnerships with area businesses and industry partners. Um, that is an exciting thing also, the, a lot of the employers in the area are like thirsty for people. Um, and have really wanted to know, like, how do we partner with schools? Like, where do we go? Do we contact the front office? Who's the person? We don't know. Um, and so to have kind of a point person where they can go to say like, hey, can we help you in this way or can you help us in this way? It's that really good mutual partnership that we're really developing with um, with partners in, well, we would like to be in all of our career pathways. We're kind of focusing a little bit on kind of the engineering um, auto culinary kind of uh, fields right now. Um, and continuing to grow and grow as time goes on. So um, that's just kind of a snippet of some of the work that I have done so far this year. Um, and it is just very exciting, the, the growth that has already happened and to kind of look forward and see where we're going to go is also super energizing.
Thank you, Brent. I don't want you to shortchange yourself. Um, we were also able to obtain a ten thousand dollar um, donation for our Rito Graphics program, which was huge given the pandemic because our kids, it's a for-profit business and our kids have an opportunity to actually gain that real-life work industry with doing the screen printing and, and, and sending that out to industry and to co- to company. So we had someone call us and, and recognize that, the work that our kids were doing and they wanted to donate ten thousand dollars. So it was a great opportunity. Um, Brent is also pursuing um, opportunities for in, for, for uh, har- har- for wood for our constructions. Um, we need lumber. As you know, lumber has skyrocketed, given the pandemic with everybody wanting to do their own projects at home and build their own deck. So it has, it has increased. So she is pursuing um, companies to donate um, wood for our students to continue to build their tiny homes or their tiny shed. Um, so she's also exploring with Valvoline. One of the things we want to do with Valvoline is have Valvoline's um, oil change employers come and, and, and mentor our kids here as they take on learning how to do an oil change in our automotive service. Can you, we, we have a big picture. We want our kids to be able to say, Valvoline, okay, we're, we're like a feeder program for you. Our kids are going to leave here and if you want someone to come work at your Valvoline until they can get that living waste job that's going to help them survive, then we can provide that for you. Um, so those are the things that we're doing. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to Brent or myself. Um, Brent would be your first contact. If she's not available, you can all definitely call me and we can have a conversation and speak more with, about any things you have, any concerns or questions. And what you see here, um, I think we shared before, last year when we did this, the presentation, we saw what the, what our facilities were, were gonna be. Um, so now you currently see, is this the before or, I think this is the before. This is one of our now, here's the after. And it's full with our kids who are learning right away. Um, this is actually one of our pictures currently. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, yeah, this is our residential kitchen.
Mm-hmm. Residential kitchen where, okay.
Culinary kitchen.
Yep. Before and after.
Demonstration kitchen. Yes, we have three kitchens.
We do. And our teachers feel so excited to be in a kitchen because they have their headsets, they have their camera. They, they are really considering themselves as the next Food Network stars. And so it is, it's amazing to see them and work and our kids, they love that, that space. This was our auto shop before. Here's auto now. We really have a great facility, um, and this is why Valvoline is interesting in what we're doing. This is a six garage. Um, and i- i- it's, it's, I can barely, I'm excited just to see it. It's very exciting. This is our woods construction.
And this is brand new. So we opened this first day, March fifteenth. Um, Mr. um, Davies was excited and he's like, oh my gosh, I don't think anybody imagined what this space would look like until we went down there and where Drew took this picture, he has a whole area up top um, that is huge. I'm like, this looks like the size of his old wood shop area. Um, and down below where he is actually going to be able to do all the things that um, Mr. Woods talked about. And then on the other side of that, you'll see a garage towards the back. Um, they will have a yard of their own to build their tiny homes and their tiny sheds. So we're really going to be looking at how are we equipping our students for tomorrow. Um, if anything, if anybody could say, what is Roseville Area High School doing right now? We are equipping tomorrow's leaders and workers. And when I say leaders and workers, it doesn't matter what our students want to do. It's tell us what you want to do and we'll make sure you can do it, um, and provide them with those opportunities. Um, so, yeah, and I'm, I'm excited because that's a really fine space and he even has a dust collector in there. So they don't have to worry about breathing in dust anymore.
Well, thank you all very much. Um, so I think we're, we just hit the questions and moving forward page. So I'll open it up to my fellow board members. If we have any questions or comments on either the, the AP, the testing, any of that, the CTE stuff. Open up the floor to anyone. Curtis.
Okay, um. Oh, so I, so many things I could ask right now. Okay, um, in no particular order, the uh, first of all, the um, I've had the uh, opportunity to um, s- see the kitchens and uh, with, with be, before COVID. Um, and um, and, and, and see the, the, the kids in there, um, and, and the, the teaching that's happening in there. And that, that's just absolutely incredible. Um, and um, I, I, I am looking forward to um, seeing the, the, the new wood shop with my own eyes. So at some point, um, but um, I guess my, my, my first question would be, um, so, um, you, um, you guys have done an incredible amount of work. Um, and the, the only question, the only thing I didn't see, and, and maybe it was just because you listed so many things, I, I, um, I, I missed it. Are you working with the um, the uh, the cultural liaisons to um, share this information? Um, it's share these classes. I, 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 okay, so Truth and Advertise now have a kid in, in, in Roseville Area High School. And so I get um, every one of your um, uh, School G posts, um, and they're great and they're awesome. And, and there's some, some, some great stuff in there. And admittedly, before this year, I didn't have access to School G. So I would never seen them before this year. But you're, you weren't here until this year, so it wouldn't have mattered. But um, but what I'm curious about is that for, for people who don't have School G, who not may, the students do, okay, but like for, for, for parents who, for whatever reason, um, aren't, aren't, aren't seeing those posts. Okay, is there, you know, what other ways are we reaching out to make sure this, this great stuff that you guys are doing? Okay, is, is known to everybody? And I have a follow-up. So, that's, so that's for anybody who wants that.
Well, when it comes to um, sending things out, I know that our liaisons are a part of that, uh, all the postings and what they, what they get and um, fielding questions. And when we do have questions, they are able to guide families. Uh, to Brent, I think one of the, the key critical things is that our non-English speaking families firsthand are visiting with Brent right off the bat. So she's like in their space with the students and now as they ask questions and their parents can ask questions, that really kind of really funnels to her. Um, when there is a need for our liaisons, um, yes, um, do we, and Brent could probably only answer this, but I don't know if we're at that space where the whole newsletter can be translated into multiple languages um, due to the size of it. Um, but I do know that we have shared information.
Yeah, that's definitely something that I want to work towards is getting that newsletter translated. Um, I do work with the cultural liaisons. It's usually like Ms. Hester said, it's usually that direct communication. Um, so oftentimes, um, I will get an email from one of our liaisons and they'll say, hey, I was working with this student and this parent and they have a question about how to do this or how to access this or um, things like that. And so it's more of that individual conversation where they'll reach out to the liaison and the liaison comes to me. Um, or I've had a lot of students that have contacted me um, and wanted to chat with me, um, ask lots of questions and then their parent is included in a lot of that communication. So um, it's been a little bit more on an individual basis at this point, working up to a more systemic thing, like absolutely, that's, that's the trajectory that I feel. Um, but yes, it's a lot of that individual stuff at this point.
Okay, um, awesome. And um, so not, not to be trying to add more stuff to your plate, um, but um, are, for, for uh, my understanding and anyone, correct me if I'm wrong, um, our students at, at FAS are able to take courses that are available at Roz. Is that, is that correct?
It's, it's really schedule-based because it all depends on what their school day looks like and, but we have, they've had taken classes. Um, actually, um, they took auto from SOPS when he was over at Rams and they would transport. And so now we have to look at what does that mean for them um, in the future. But also with the understanding that right now, even with um, summer school coming up, we're offering those courses. It would be auto, some woods. Um, and I know Tad is doing some adult ed, uh, and using those spaces for that as well. Um, so i- it's, it's be, it's being used and there is access, yes.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that we were reaching out to our, our, our FAS the counterparts to, so that they could have access to these really cool programs also. It sounds like that, that's, that's happening. So, um, I think, um, oh, last thing, um, okay. Just as I, I, I just, I'm, it's a marketing thing. We got, you guys got to find a way to put this like, you guys like need your own website. I mean, the, what you're, okay, so, so I, I went onto the Roz website, the, the ISD six twenty-three. Okay, and so I could, I, I, I found the brochure. The brochure is awesome. Okay, is there, okay. Does not translate to all the awesomeness that has just been discussed in the last fifteen, whatever minutes. So we, so, so we've got to find a way to let everybody know what's going on and, and whether it's a website or something, just, just, I, I, I'm great. Wha- whatever we can do to help make that happen, I'm on board with that because.
Josh, did you hear that? We are, we are working on that right now. Josh and Brent are, are working on that as, as we speak. That's the, the next step is the, the website for that.
I think I just gave Brent access to the website a few days ago. So I love her enthusiasm. And uh, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure we get this pushed out and, and shared.
And the video, and the video is very good as well. So it's just getting it out there and Josh did a lot of work on that pre-pandemic. And then the pandemic hit and then it's like, oh, what happened to that video? But even the product that he has right now is, it's exciting. Like you said, Curtis, is, it is exciting. So we're looking forward to that.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so, um, I'm, 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 I'm sure I have some other things, but I'm gonna let my uh, other school board members uh, jump in. But uh, thank you for, for, thank you all for, for, for your hard work. So.
There's questions, thoughts? Time?
Hey, thank you. Um, sorry again for the technical difficulties at the front end. But I want to say thank you to Brent, thank you to all of you. Um, thanks for coming aboard Brent and joining the team and helping us out in this area. I just, I just wanted to, you know, ask kind of in the line of what um, Director Johnson was mentioning. Uh, is there anything that we as a school board, we as a district, you know, are, are there ways that we can help reach out to even more businesses? I know we want businesses to come forward with their opportunities, with learning needs. If there's anything that we can do, um, businesses that we can reach out to, uh, you know, please, please come to us. If we can help out, uh, that would be great. I just, uh, what you guys are doing, it's, it's, it's phenomenal. And I'm glad you're on board, Brent. I really am. And I'm glad you're on board, Bren, uh, I really am.
Katie?
I was just, uh, like others, very excited about all the work you're doing. But one of the things I found particularly, um, exciting to me was to see the, the relatively proportional representation across the different groups. That is an amazing, um, development that I know has taken a lot of work from a lot of people. Um, but to see that in both the current technical and in the college credit classes is exciting. Um, I had a question, I remember seeing from Century, they used to have this kind of tree where they talked about, you know, in a career, in an area of, let's say, um, construction, that, you know, there's, that there's the various careers that you can do by getting a few courses. Then you can build on that to get college degree, you know, a two-year certificate and then build on that to go to four-year, et cetera. And I was wondering if we're using that as all, because I find even those students who are doing the college level credits can really benefit from the hands-on understanding that you can get in a career and technical course. And so all of that can be very complimentary. Or the student who starts with hand-on can get introduced to something and get excited and may choose to go on to other careers in a similar field. So if you can just comment on your thoughts about that.
We have the tree posted in our offices. So if you come into our office, you will see the tree. The tree is a, a great starting point when we have any conversation with a, with a student and Bren has it. Um, and again, and that's part of what we are doing with our scope and sequence. We are using a tree to model our scope and sequence from Roseville Area High School. Um, I know we're live, so I really can't say what I want to say, but we are still with our partners. But the goal is to have our kids, when they leave our building, um, that they're gonna be ready using our scope and sequence and also using that, that, that career tree to be ready for the workforce industry. So we do use it, yes, we do.
Thank you.
Rose? You're on mute.
Yes. Um, I want to echo what Katie actually took it right from my mouth in terms of some of the things I noticed about the, 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 um, the parody, which is so exciting. And also the idea that even if you want to go to college, what, you know, the, the CTE could, uh, offer. Um, and I, I thought about this and I don't know how many of you know this, is that when I was doing teacher education and I was teaching math, uh, math candidates, like future math teachers, one of the thing that I did was to have my math teacher actually took a CTE summer course in GTT, the gateway to technology, because I took it and I wanted them to take it. And I find that crossover pollination helps like the, the, the teachers who are traditionally like, I'm in math because I love math. I'm in science because that's what I've always wanted to be a science teacher. So I, I was just thinking about where, where, where might be ways to do those cross pollination even within, within, uh, within, uh, the district itself. So I would love to, uh, hear if you guys are doing anything, I mean, anything like that where, where teachers are collaborating that way. You guys are laughing, this is so great.
I got it, Chris, I got it, I got it. We, we currently have math for the trades. Um, and it is taught by a math teacher who is a licensed construction, um, site coordinator. So she has her construction license, so we are, yes, we do.
Yeah. I want to expand on that a little bit too. I've had several, um, like core content teachers, um, come to me and say, hey, I have always wanted to talk to my ninth grade science students about what kinds of careers can come out of science. But I've never really had time to put that into my curriculum, can you help? So I had several teachers that have come to me for that and, and we are working together. It's kind of been a slow process because so many transitions this year, we're kind of, um, putting some things on hold, but definitely those conversations are happening. Um, with math teachers, science teachers, I've, I've had definitely math and science and several different like specialties in those areas. Um, uh, I've talked with some social studies teachers on how to incorporate like social justice type careers in their curriculum. So, um, I have been working with teachers, um, that teach more of those core content areas on how to, how do you talk careers um, to students that are taking this class because it's a grad requirement?
Oh, makes me so happy when I hear that. Because CTE has a special place in my heart. I'm actually working with Mean State right now on a CTE, um, project that is from an equity lens. Like what does it mean to ensure that, you know, the barriers and all the things that prevent many of our BIPOC students from having access are being, um, addressed? So it's wonderful to hear what is happening here in the district. I mean, I echo what, uh, my other directors say, whatever we can do, like, you know, we get a lot of the other newsletter from our schools. So that as a way for us to know what is going on in schools and all the great like programs and events that really are very public facing, let us know. I mean, if there was a way that this become public facing, uh, it is, yeah, these are great examples of some of those, those, those things that you're talking about, right? Traditional program and kind of the CTE working together. And, um, and because a lot of this, what that I'm hearing, which I've known for a long time, is that there's a perception. There's always been a perception about how two-year is lesser than. So what, what do we do to kind of like disrupt that by the stories, by the experience, by the collaboration that, that is actually happening in the district? So thank you for your work. This is amazing. This is an amazing report, both on the traditional track and also on the CTE. So thank you so much.
Other questions? Frank?
Uh, just a quick question. Uh, we have, we're members, of course, uh, with, uh, the intermediate district nine sixteen. I know nine sixteen does some CTE or provides some opportunities. To what extent are we using those opportunities, uh, or are we entirely self-sufficient from this?
Well, wait, no.
Go ahead, Chris.
Our job is to get our kids back.
She said it, I did.
Get our kids back. They can have the overflow. Our job is to provide all those opportunities in our building. The, I will tell you this, we don't have the, the EMT. We don't have that.
Yeah.
So they're going to provide our students with things that we can't give them, such as in the health, health professional field. And we're okay with that. That's where that, I think that partnership really comes into play is what that looks like. And we're hoping that we're gonna have an open house soon. We don't know how soon, soon, very soon, but we don't know when. And just so people can see the picture that you saw with the auto shop, that looks like a dealership auto shop. That's not, hey, let's drive up one or two cars. He also has a detailing space in the back as well. And he's going to be, um, operating a, um, a co-talk class for special ed students to learn auto detailing. So our job in, and, and nine sixteen, that partnership is still there and we're always working with them. And now we have to say, what do we have so we maintain our students? So what do they have to give them those other extra opportunities that we cannot provide? And that's what the community is all about. The community is not about hoarding, but it's about what is your niche? What can you do for, for certain populations or what kids want and what can they do? And that's where I think our partnership and Drew probably talked more to this with nine sixteen may actually flourish because we're no longer depending on them, but we're partnering with them to make sure kids get what they need. Um, so that's why I said what I said as far as keeping our people, because we love our people. We want our people in our building. I do anyway, I don't know about the rest.
Partnership, the collaborative partnership is flourishing. Um, we currently send the most students within the cohort to nine sixteen. Um, Roseville has the most kids participating at nine sixteen. Um, and it, it is a great partnership. I, I, I'm in communication with their leadership at least once a week. Um, we continue to send kids there. Um, for example, say if a kid takes advanced constructions in our building, um, they will build a tiny house, a shed. Um, the next step for them is as they go to nine sixteen, they are building homes. So that is the goal in where we want to be. So they're providing something for us to want to search for, to rise to the occasion and we, we will get there.
All right. Two thumbs up from Director Shaw. Any other questions or comments? Uh, Curtis?
Okay, just, just, just a comment. I, I've, I've literally spent the, um, since, since I've been on the, on the school board, I've talked to, um, many people that have, um, that, that have told me that they're just so, uh, so, so upset and tired that, that, that schools have gone away from offering, um, classes like shops and operating trades and, and, uh, there's overemphasis, emphasis on only on four-year um, degrees and, uh, and I, 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 I keep telling them, but we're, we're, we're over at Roseville, we're doing some really cool things. You should come and take a look. Um, uh, I just want to thank you for, um, allowing me to be able to, to say that, uh, again and again, you guys are, uh, Roseville Area Schools is definitely an outlier, um, when it comes to, um, everything that we're providing, um, our, our students. And, and that's, that's because of, uh, um, the, your, your vision and a lot of hard work. And, and it is, it is appreciated. And so that's it.
Sure. Really appreciate that. I appreciate the great work everyone has done. Um, when the first idea was first put out there years ago, I guess I couldn't have envisioned that it, uh, would have come forth this far, this fast. And I thank you all for all your work for that.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Scully. Uh, we good to go on? Any for, any final thoughts, questions from fellow board members? Looks like we're, up Curtis, one more thing? Nope, you're good, you're good.
A quick comment from me, Chair, I opened up with thanking Jenny Allen for her tremendous volunteer service. And I'd like to close just by thanking Chris and Drew, tremendous administrative leadership on their part in terms of building not only the foundation, but again, that continued trajectory, um, and just really appreciate their premier leadership and of course, support by Bren. So thank you for having us.
Oh, well put, Dr. Lake, thank you all. All right. With that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the first reading of, uh, proposed policy revision. And I believe Director of, uh, who's doing is Teaching and Learning, uh, Jake Vonnegut, please take the lead.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Bogashevsky. Yes, this is policy six sixteen, it's the instructional materials selection policy. Um, just a few, um, edits and in, um, I guess additions that we made to the policy really to align with our, not just our equity vision, but our work around absent narratives that we have been, um, doing in the last four to five years. Um, and so you'll see in, um, one of the changes in five point two, we are changing learning styles to preferences. There's been more research out that, that doesn't really align with the learning styles, but more of like they're around preferences for students. Um, in five point three, we included a, um, a line around including historically absent and counter narratives to make that a stronger, um, statement, not just to provide multiple viewpoints, but to really include those absent narrative pieces. And then in five point seven point three, the accuracy of material, we wanted to make sure that it's accurate and also representative um, and includes those absent and counter narratives. And then in five point seven point four, um, we included a new, um, line that has representation of historically marginalized groups. And then, um, the, after adding that line, the rest of those numbers have been changed. So those are the changes that we are bringing to you this evening in the first reading.
Thank you, Jake. Any questions or thoughts? Looks like up Curtis?
Okay, um, I, 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 I like all of it and, and, and um, I do have a question about five, five dot seven dot three. Um, when you explain it, it makes sense. Um, but when I read it, when I read it the first time, accuracy of material, comma, including absent and counter narratives. I know, I, it, it almost feels like it should be kind of like accuracy of material as, as one sub-block and then inclusion of absent and counter narratives as a second. Cause it, when it's together, I, I don't, I, I don't read it the way you said it and I like what you said. Um, and, and maybe, maybe it's just me, so I'm, but the rest of it, I works for me.
Yeah, I actually agree with, uh, with, um, with Vic Curtis, because I think you're talking about accuracy. So accuracy according to who, right? Um, so I think that's what you're trying to address. So how do you either not even use the word accurate or use it in a way that really say what you mean around kind of like the dominant narrative and the accurate, but also, but, but it's also not the full picture or so. No, I, I don't, you know, kind of think about how do you say that in a way that really speaks to the fact that, yeah, the, the dominant narrative, it may not be that it is not accurate, it's just not complete. It doesn't, it's not inclusive, right? It's not inclusive and it's missing many stories and narratives. So I think more nuance about that might, might read better than what it says on there. Yeah, because when you explain it, it makes sense. Yeah, totally makes sense. And I would say for five point seven point four, is it only about historically marginalized group? Or is this also about currently? Because are we only talking about history or are we also talking about, um, the current conditions? Because some of these things are not only about history, some of these things are happening as we speak in society. So how do we balance that? That when we start talking about materials that, you know, we don't talk, like, you know, if you think about, um, the American Indian community, right? They always talk about how we are being talked about in the past tense as if, no, we're here, we're still here, right? We're still here. And how do we do that in a way that when we start talking about groups that have been left out? That we don't only talk about the past, but it's also a present, present situation and present condition that we want to share?
Yeah, good point. Thank you.
Um, when I think of accuracy material, I was assuming it applied to more than just the accuracy of portrayal around absent and counter narratives. I mean, to me, a criterion's material selection needs to be accuracy from all kinds of different dimensions. And so combining those two to me, um, doesn't feel as connected as saying one of accuracy material and the next one is accurate portrayal of this, of, um, marginalized groups or something of that nature. Um, it feels like maybe you want to expand for to get the con, or, yeah, for to get the concept that you were looking for in three, because I think we still need something about accurate material. Um, you know, the, the numbers have to add together, right? That, you know, all the, everything else outside of just, um, the context of absent narratives.
Yeah, it sounds like most board members are agreeing with the spirit of it. Maybe just do reword that three and four a little bit to, to include maybe a separate piece or I could do some wording around that.
Other thoughts?
Thank you for this work, Jay, yeah.
Yep. So Jake, it looks like you get it. I think that, um, I would second everything that my fellow board members have said. You get the spirit of it. I think even in recent communications, you know, when it comes to things like historical accuracy, it's just so real that there are different perspectives and different lenses through which things are viewed. And so accurate can be accurate, but it might not be complete or it might not be the whole story. And so the goal would be for not just accuracy, but you know, I don't know what it might be depth or something or, or comprehensiveness around the different viewpoints that could be around a particular thing. It doesn't mean that four plus four, uh, won't equal eight, but it could mean that, you know, whatever, especially when it comes to anything that was subjective or, or an historical fact, quote unquote, so. All right. So then, right. So what we're asking Jake to do is just put his massive intellect to the task of coming up with a new way to word and organize the concept that we shared and bring it back for the second reading at some point. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to the federal cares funding update with Sherri Thompson.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, there's been much talk recently, especially with the new administration and the recent passage of the American Rescue Plan Act. I thought or we thought it would be timely to really take a look and revisit some of the federal dollars that are coming to the school district as a result of the legislation actually over the last year. We actually visited with you, I believe, last October and provided an update at that time. So we want to touch base on that again, and I am going to share my screen. And hopefully everyone can see that. Okay, does everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So there, again, there's actually been three key pieces of legislation, federal legislation over the last year relate related to the coronavirus. So the first piece, that was the what's referred to as the CARES Act, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, was the original legislation passed last March. The second piece, which we've I've kind of sometimes referred to as CARES Act two. That was the legislation that was signed into law in this on December twenty seventh of two thousand and twenty. So that was the second piece. And then most recently, the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty one, which was signed into law on March eleventh. So I'm going to try and break this down a little bit, going back to the original legislation, the CARES Act. That act basically established what was referred to as the Education Stabilization Fund. And as we have more legislation, I now refer to it or it's commonly referred to as CARES round one. So the Education Stabilization Fund, there are two components to it. One is the Governor's Emergency Relief Fund. And the other piece is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, commonly referred to as ESER. So these funds that were issued in this first round, the ESER and the GIRS, we can spend those funds from now through September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty two. Another piece of of this same legislation was the coronavirus relief funds or the CRF funds. And that was really those funds were really kind of geared towards that original startup when the pan with the pandemic. So that those were dollars that were spent and we talked about that at that time that were spent between like July first and December thirty first of two thousand and twenty. So those were kind of the immediate dollars that we needed to reopen our our schools. Then talking about the first pool of funds or the first pot, the gear funds, the governor's funds, those are directed. Again, there's targeted uses for the various funds. So for the gear funds, we can use that for technology access, including hotspots for our families or any kind of technology access for families and and our students. This money can also be used for summer school programming. So we could buy additional staff, which actually decreases class size or transportation related related to summer school programming. And we're actually looking at our summer school programming for the upcoming year for this. And then there's you can also use some of it for for grants for that are focused on underserved communities. And then the ESER fund, the ESER fund actually has about twelve, there are about twelve authorized uses or general categories, broad categories for the ESER funds. So the first being any activities that are authorized by federal education law. So that could be expanded expanding title programs or expanding some of our federal programs. COVID preparedness and response activities with other agencies. So other local governments or other agencies that we work with. We can use this to secure resources to address each school's needs. So we can attend to individual sites. Also, the funding is used to address the unique needs of our learners, including outreach and the mode in, excuse me, in which we deliver our services. Also developing and implementing procedures and systems to improve our our preparedness and and response in the case of the pandemic or preparedness even going forward from what we've learned through the pandemic. We can also use the funds for training and professional development for staff on any kind of sanitation and mitigation. We can use the funds for purchasing supplies and for sanitization and cleaning our schools. Another use is planning for and coordinating during long term closures, which we have seen some of those long term closures, including provision of meals of our required childcare resources. We have continued to provide meals since last last March. We have provided childcare. Actually, we provided childcare up until March fifteenth, when excuse me, all of our elementary students were back in school five days a week and then also technology resources again here. So we can purchase educational technologies. So whether that be for instruction or for our students to use. And then also mental health supports and any kind of mental health services. And then planning and implementing activities related to summer learning. So again, this could supplement the gear funds and it could be summer learning or after school programs. Something that we have been working on developing. And last but not least, these funds may be used for any other activities that are necessary to main maintain the operation, to maintain our operations and continue the educational services that we provide and to continue employing existing staff. Because of course, that you know, the goal is to keep everyone to keep everyone working and to keep providing the services that we provide to our students and our families. The other fund, and again, this is part of that CRF fund that was part of the original legislation. Again, this was a lot of the startup costs and also operational costs. So we purchased a lot of cleaning supplies, screening supplies, our personal protective equipment, transportation cost to transport meals during the the summer months. We also this money could also be used for supporting our students and our families and our educators. Technology devices. Again, I had mentioned some of the hotspots, tutors and mentors, translation services, school age childcare, which we had been, we did provide for a year. And then also professional development and anything that we need as far as related to activities that are necessary to maintain the operation of our of the educational services. And again, all of these authorized uses uses are defined in the legislation. So that was that was the first pot or the the first piece of legislation. The second one, then the supplemental, the coronavirus response and relief supplemental act was passed in December, signed into law in December twenty seventh. And this really provided as far as school district goes. I know it's a much larger package. But for our school district, what that meant was we refer to it as CARES round two. What we are seeing from that is additional ESER funds. So again, those twelve broad categories, and then they added three more categories. So we could add address academic support amongst our students. They expanded it to include school facility repairs and improvements and any type of inspections or projects that are designed to improve the indoor air quality in our facilities. Now, the second, the second pot of money from the CARES round two must be spent by September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty three. So again, that's how a year later than the original funding. And then that brings us to the most recent legislation. There was additional funds passed in March of two thousand and twenty one. And what, again, we refer to this as CARES round three. So we will receive additional funds in both in both the gear fund, the the governor's emergency fund and then also the ESER fund. We don't do not know as of today. We're not sure on those amounts. We're awaiting allocation amounts from the Department of Education. They are anticipating that we will get those sometime after April ninth. And then this pot of money has to be spent by September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty four. So accessing our federal funds, just like all of our federal funds. Well, these are, you know, they're only available for a specified period of time, which is why they all have the sunset dates. They are one time funds. Again, it's part of the whole recovery plan with the pandemic. We must submit applications and and budgets. Those have to be approved by the Department of Education in order to access the funds. And we can only use the funds for the expenses, the qualified expenses as outlined by the federal government. So so what does this mean? What do these numbers look like? So I've put together, you know, kind of based on one legislation passed. So the CFR funds, again, that was that original startup. We purchased a lot of techno technology, childcare costs, custodial custodial equipment, PPE. So we were allocated two point three million dollars. And those were dollars that, again, were spent between July and December of two thousand and twenty. So those were all added expenses, the cost of kind of, you know, reopening. Some of the things included in there was was technology that we provided to our fa had to provide to our families that didn't have access to that. The CARES round one, again, part of that March legislation. If you look at the different funds that I kind of touched on, we have a total there of one point five million dollars is what was generated. So that's in addition to those startup funds. So we we were allocated one point five million dollars. And again, that money needs to be spent by September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty two. The most, well, not the most recent legislation, the CARES round two that was passed in December of two thousand and twenty, we will receive about five point six million dollars in in the ESER funds. And just so you can, you know, take this in into context, of course, our general fund budget is about a hundred and five million dollars. So this will give us a supplement of about five point six million dollars. At the same time as we're receiving these one time funds, we are actually, for instance, this year we lost, we are under enrolled by about two hundred and fifty students as a result of the pandemic. So it helps to offset some of those costs, because two hundred and fifty students is about two hundred, two point five million dollars for us. So again, some of our added costs and some of our operational costs. The legislation, as I mentioned, that was passed in March, we do not have an allocation on that yet. And we will update you as soon as we have that. As I mentioned, that that's we're estimating sometime April after April ninth. So total revenue is about nine point four million dollars to date for the CARES revenue. Then looking at the expenses, again, this just kind of is an overall updates or, you know, shows broad categories of where we are spending these dollars. So you can see the CFR funds, the types of expenses that we incurred or the broad categories of the two point three million dollars. The CARES round one, there again, you see those broad categories. And those are the funds that have to be spent by September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty two. So that's the one point five million. And right now, we're looking at the five point six million dollars. And those dollars have to be spent by September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty three, and then we're waiting that other allocation on the dollars that have to be spent for two thousand and twenty four. So what we will be considering, and again, depending on what those allocations are. As I mentioned, the legislation in the most recent legislation also expanded the uses to include some of those capital improvements. Actually, the December, the December legislation. So not only would we possibly be considering some of our operational costs and expanding opportunities for kids to as far as the learning loss and some of the mental health services and other services that are needed. But we may actually be recommending investing some of those dollars because they are one time dollars in making some of the capital improvements in some of the HVAC or some of our operations. As you are all aware, we have the long term facility maintenance plan, the deferred maintenance. And while we have been very fortunate with our building bond and then also the deferred maintenance plan, it's going to take some years. You know, another ten to twelve years to complete the upgrades to make all of our facilities as far as the heating, ventilation, air conditioning to complete that process, because we do have significant deferred maintenance. So an option here would be to kind of shorten that cycle and possibly potentially invest some of those dollars in the facilities, which would help with that deferred maintenance and could also provide some relief to our taxpayers if we could use some of those federal funds. So overall, quick summary, you know, what's next? Well, we are looking at revising the current budget, your budget. We came to you in January with a revised budget. Typically, we do only revise the budget once a year. But as we stated at that time, with the influx of the federal dollars and so many moving parts and pieces with the pandemic, we had suggested that we it was very likely that when we could be coming back with another revision this year. Our plan is to do that, to bring that back to possibly your first meeting in May. Our plan is to do that, to bring that back to possibly your first meeting in May. At that time, by then, we will have the more detailed information on the CARES on the round three, not only the dollar amount, but the authorized uses. And we are continuing work on our developing next year's budget. And we will continue to provide the updates as needed. So I know I quickly ran through that, but I'm, I'm more than willing to stand for any questions or clarifications.
Sure. Thank you very much. Very thorough and detailed, as always. Any questions from fellow board members? Let's see, everyone.
I just want to comment, I echo what Mike say, it just, thank you, Sheri. It's just so clear, the way you present it in terms of where the funds are, the, you know, the expiration date and the categories that we're using it, really, really appreciate that. And, and really appreciate the work, because it's like a moving target, right? This, I don't know how many times we're having to keep revisiting the budget and looking at where we can spend the money. And I'm very looking forward to the update about our operating levy, like, how, how does that impact everything else that we are supposed to be doing long-term? So thank you for that work. This is, this is a lot of work. It's so really appreciate that. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Kitty?
I think Todd was actually before me, if you want to.
Okay, sorry.
No problem. Just, yeah, also to echo what Director Chu said too. And thanks, Sheri, for all your work and diligence. And just to also keep track, and I know you're well aware, but another ball to throw in this mix that we're juggling is I know there's an education omnibus bill floating around the state legislature. And that's also some possible funds to keep track of their state level that I know I've read about, and of course, it would have to be passed and signed. But summer programming to help mitigate declining enrollment. So that is also something I'm sure you're very well aware, but, and we'll get those updates later as the legislative session was on, but another ball just to throw up in the air there to juggle, so.
Keep some.
Sheri, did you have something you wanted to say real quick?
Oh, no, I just, I just said it keeps us on our toes.
Yep.
I was wondering if we could get a copy of the material shared tonight. I'd like to study in a little bit more depth, especially your chart that showed all the different things we're spending on at different points. That was really very valuable, and I'd like to, if you could share that. And then the second question I had is, as you're looking at these various CARES funding, while there's these categories that clearly you've shared with us, and there's 12 categories, are there a lot of rules within the categories? For example, as we're thinking about summer school or trying to help our students recover some of what they've missed, how, how many hoops do we have to run through? Or do we, are we able to do what we think is best for our students? I was just trying to get a feel for how that fits together.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good question. And actually, up to this point, I've been, I have, I, it's, they've made it fairly easy, right? They, they really have worked to try to let us address our own student population and the unique populations and students that we all serve. So, so the application process and the budgeting process up to this point has been fairly straightforward. And again, you know, because of the different needs, I think they're really trying to, of course, the Department of Education is, you know, always good to work with. But even at the federal level, I think that they're trying to allow that flexibility to address unique needs.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Sheri? Look, looks like we're good. And then Kitty, final thought or question?
Sort of want to follow that up a little bit. So are we able to move fully forward with our planning on summer school? Are we still really needing to know the not, the dollar amount before we could finalize some of those thoughts? And I don't know if that really goes to you, Sheri, or to others, but.
I know. I was like, Aldo, are you okay with me addressing that, what we've done up to this point?
Yes, we're going to have a presentation later when we know more, at a different board meeting. But yeah, the current status would be appreciated.
Yeah, we, and we have given some targets, right? So that what would it look like at X amount of dollars, what would it look at level? So that we have something to react to. And then, you know, also, you know, the resources that are there, both in hiring, whether it's teachers or other staff, and then also looking at the family interest. So I think it's a matter of weighing the two.
Thank you.
Curtis?
Okay, and a lot of those lines, like, when would you need to know? When, when would you, when, when would you need to know what you're getting in order to make a decision about, like, say, summer school? Because obviously, planning, you, you can't wait, you, you can't, one can't wait until May 15th to decide, I'm going to run three classes of summer school versus two. That's got to be decided sooner. So I'm, I would think.
Right. And I think that's, that's the benefit right now of having the, the dollars, like in this December package, you know, that was the $5.6 million. Obviously, again, we have $105 million budget, so, and it is one-time money. But we've looked at setting a portion that aside, so we're not reliant on the legislature. And we figure out that mechanism as we move forward. We, we have the flexibility at this point. And even some of the memos that I, I know, surveys that we've seen in the last week or the last few days, talk about, you know, like $4 per student per hour. And when I read that, I'm like, not even, to me, it's unclear. They could be referring to some of the federal dollars. They call it the governor's dollars, but it could be actually part of these federal allocations. But we have enough information to build the framework, and we can figure out the specific funding as we get closer. It, we have enough information to plan.
Okay. All right. That, that was the only thing I was concerned about. All right. Thank you. And, and thank you for, this, this was a, I was going to echo what everyone said. This is so helpful to, to be able to, you know, convey this information to, you know, our audience and, and to, to other people about where the money is going, because they, a lot of people hear $9 million. They go, oh, my goodness, you know, you guys are, you're flush with cash. I was like, oh, no, not, not, not really. So.
Yeah, and it really is over a three-year period. Yes. And, and again, I know I've had, we've been starting to get questions, right, on the March with, you know, because of course, that was the most recent, and there was stimulus dollars. So, you know, in the last week, I can't, we've had a lot of questions. And honestly, it's like, we don't know yet, you know, we're working on it, but we still are awaiting those allocations and that clarity.
Thank you.
Any questions for Sheri? Looks like we're good to move on, and keeping in the same theme, I believe Dr. Sikoli is going to give us an overview and big picture of those sort of finances and some thoughts on operating levy and how they all relate. Aldo?
Forgot to get unmuted there. Thank you, Chair Bogashevsky. I am happy to provide an update on topics the school board is well aware of. One is our financial challenges, which we have been discussing my entire time on the team. And then how it relates to the November operating referendum, which we've been talking about for quite some time, I'm thinking about a year and a half now. So this will give you an update on where we're at. And you'll see through this that there will be more information shared as it becomes known in the coming months. So indeed, as everyone knows, it's been a challenging school year, but not just due to COVID, but also due to financial pressures. And so I want to provide a summary of our overall financial picture and operating levy status, as well as share a timeline for moving forward. So on the second slide, as a district, we have a long and proud history of providing strong educational programs. We have talented, caring staff and a shared vision of excellence. We're also fortunate to have, from our community, decades of generous and reliable financial support, which has enabled us to meet the educational needs of our students and their families. We work hard to be good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars and to be financially transparent and credible. We recently received the certificate of excellence for excellent comprehensive financial reporting, demonstrating our commitment to financial transparency and accountability. And I want to commend Sheri Thompson and her business services staff for all the extra work that goes into attaining that recognition. And then also, recently, our district's credit rating was upgraded by Moody Financial, Moody's Financial Services. And I, I don't think that's insignificant, given the financial challenges we've had. I think that's an indication that we have been dealing with them in a very financially prudent manner. So the third slide shows you this pie chart that, as you know, the vast majority of our funding, about three-fourths comes from the state. There's about 20% comes from local community through various levies, some of which is our border-approved operating levy. And the balance comes from the federal government and other sources, things like grants and fees. But as we see on this graph, it has become increasingly challenging to maintain our quality programs with the resources provided. For nearly two decades, state funding hasn't kept pace with inflation or increasing educational costs. If state funding had merely kept pace with inflation since 2003, we would have received an additional $4 million this year alone. In addition to state funding not keeping pace, we have other financial pressures. Our special education programs, which of course are required and are vital part of our district, cost us nearly $10 million more each year than we receive. So of course, this adds to the pressure on our budget. And as was alluded to in the presentation that Sheri just completed, due to the pandemic, you know, the federal government has provided additional funds to schools for which we are very grateful. However, as a group, they are one-time funds focused on pandemic relief needs. And so they do not address our long-term budget sustainability. So this chart, I think, puts in visual what has been a painful reality for us. Given these financial realities, we have made cuts to live within our means to manage increasing expenses amid inadequate revenue. We've cut more than $8 million since 2013. And so these cuts have negatively affected staffings at all levels, student supports, and have increased class sizes. And without additional revenue, cuts will continue, unfortunately. As mentioned, our second largest source of financial support is our local community through operating levies. Levies do support our operating budget, enabling us to provide the staff, the materials and supports that our students need. And so the last time we asked our community to increase our operating levy was 15 years ago. I just want to pause and reflect on that a little bit. 15 years is a very long time, especially when you think of that chart that says, since 2003, the state funding hasn't kept pace with inflation. We do our best to live within our means and only go to voters when necessary, which will be the case again this coming fall. And that's been the tradition in our school district. I think it's a fine tradition. Many people aren't aware that there's a legal distinction between different pots of money schools receive, and particularly, the difference between levies and bonds. And I like to point this out monthly at these meetings in my superintendent's report at the end of the meeting, because people often don't know this, the general public. But we had a bond request in 2017, and we're so grateful our community supported that request. Obviously, it's enabled us to make building improvements all across the district. But bond funds can only be used for building projects. The operating levies are for learning, supporting classroom instruction, teachers, and other school operating costs. So currently, our operating levy is below most of our neighboring and comparable school district. And of course, that means less funding for our schools, our staff, and our students. Our border-approved operating levy is a critical source of funding for us. If it isn't renewed in November, we will lose $8 million annually. We also know that if we only renew the levy but don't get more revenue, cuts would continue. An increase in the operating levy is something we're considering for the November 2021 ballot. The board has been discussing it for a long time, in addition to asking voters to renew our current levy. Over the next few months, we, as I said at the start, will continue to bring to the school board information, as it becomes known, to help you decide what to ask of voters in November. And we anticipate asking the board to make a final decision on the levy request at the June 22 school board meeting. Those are tentative plans. And so with that, questions or comments related to this?
Questions or thoughts for Aldo? Kitty?
I would just like to compliment on the very concise way of presenting some very complicated information. So thank you very much for that.
I echo that, for sure.
That was certainly a team effort, so I thank my colleagues.
Any others? Although I think I'll just echo that myself. I think that, you know, this is the, the beginning of what will be the messaging. We'll have to, in addition to deciding what we want to do in terms of amounts and what we ask for is what those key messages are. And I think you've given us some very clear information as to what would or could happen if we're, if this isn't successful. So I think we'll be able to build on that very much. So thank you for pulling this together. And we'll continue, obviously, with this in, in deep discussion as we continue to meet through the rest of the school year and through the summer. Thank you.
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Rose.
Yeah, so given what Sheri has presented and questions that people have, right? You got this $9 million, and then you're going to get more. We don't know what the amount is. How do we, like, integrate that information that public will want, you know, will know about into the understanding of how that impacts, like, this presentation? If at all? Like, even if it is only, like, if it's, if it's only to show, like, this impact, like, the first two years, but the levy you are talking about the next, you know, for a while. So I'm just thinking of, like, from a, from a public standpoint, right? Like, how do you, how do you reconcile those, those numbers in a way that is part of this presentation?
Yeah, I think that's, that becomes the task, because I anticipate that is going to be some things community members will wonder about, so that is the task to educate them on this. And some of that, I think, has been done through these presentations. And we have to keep educating the community about what those very needed and appreciated federal funds are for. And then what the separate long-term financial sustainability and stability of the district is, as it relates to that, and that is, that those funds are not an answer to that part of the equation.
And I just wonder whether visually we can see that, right? Like, there might be a dip in the, the diet situation that we have, but it is not the cure for the long-term sustainability. So I'm just kind of thinking out loud here in terms of.
Yeah, you're stating it accurately. It certainly isn't a cure for the long-term sustainability. We will need to rely on our community to once again step up to the plate, and I'm confident they will. But, you know, as was shown in slide nine, you know, there is a community survey occurring, and results, results will be shared. And so that's the next piece of information that will be shared at the. community survey occurring, and the results will be shared. And so that's the next piece of information that will be shared at the next school board meeting. And then from there, we, we have some further discussions. And as was brought up in Sherri's presentation right before this one, obviously, when we get to late May, we know a lot more about what the state legislature is going to do. And that, even if they're not finished and they go to a special session, we should have a, a pretty good idea of what the funding might be for schools. And so that'll be another important piece of information, I think.
Thank you. Any other questions or thoughts? Thank you again, Aldo.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have System Superintendent Dr. Mike Favor, who's going to share with us what this district is doing in efforts to support our Asian-American and Pacific Islander students and staff, particularly in light of recent events in the news. Dr. Favor, welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for that introduction. Board members, Board Chair Bogushevsky, board members, Superintendent Sikoli, guests and team. As many of you know, some of the recent news that many of our members nationally in the community, our Asian-American and Pacific Islander members have come under attack for various reasons in our community. First and foremost, I want to thank this board in April of 2020 for passing a resolution supporting Asian-American students and families that we continue to live into the mission and vision of our district as well, as well as building what we call the Roseville Way, where we are connected and we belong to each other. Within that, some of the communication that's currently happening is we're communicating the mediums of, of our, our buildings, our school buildings, and our, our principal newsletters that are going out. We're communicating support, support for Asian-American and Pacific Islander people, support for our community, again, living to the equity mission and vision. Some of the other things that we're doing, not just with the newsletters, but really building on the work we've done with our story circles. We're beginning using our story circles to continue to listen to students and having them co-facilitate and lead the conversations around questions that may occur. With those questions, our teaching and learning group has an exceptional job of engaging our teachers with resources. Really want to thank our teaching and learning group for that. An exceptional job of helping teachers and support staff lead these conversations that are being facilitated by our staff. Next slide, please, Michelle. We also value the importance of making a space and place for our students and staff. Not just talking at them, but really, again, having late, age-appropriate lessons, but spending time listening to our staff, listening to our students, and listening to any community members. And sometimes that means reaching out individually. Our cultural liaisons have been essential in helping this happen. Really want to applaud our cultural liaisons for, we made a stand condemning some of the most recent acts that called to action, and Siobhan Johnson, along with some of our other Asian-American and Pacific Islander staff, got together in a call to action and showed support for each other. And those are the kind of things that I believe we must continue. We're discussing and continuing to discuss spaces and places to continue this work, continue this engagement, and continue to come together to support our students, our staff, and our community. As of yet, I have not heard anything that has happened in our community, but that's not to say that it may not have happened. But I really believe our staff, our principals, our leadership, our support staff, our custodians, everyone is involved in this process and identifying anything that may reflect any kind of hate and addressing it immediately. So with that, that's just a simple update on some of the things that we are doing, and we will continue to do the work around story circles, add some narratives for all groups, and again, continuing to create a space and place for the Roseville Way as we talk about belonging to each other and modeling that.
Thank you, Dr. Favor. Any comments or questions from my fellow board members or Mike? Rose, were you going to say something?
Well, Curtis, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, Rose, I'll follow you.
Well, I'm trying to. Yeah, this is heartfelt, so. I can say, just thank you.
Yeah, I think Curtis, go ahead.
Okay, Dr. Favor, I just wanted to thank you in particular for pointing out the, the, the work that is being done, not just with, well, be more precise, the entire Roseville community. It's, it's our, our, our teachers, our staff, our support staff, our custodians, our nutrition services, everybody is, is, is part of addressing this. And we are Roseville Area Schools, you know, you know, we're a family, we rally around each other. So, you know, thank you. Thank you for the work.
Thank you on this board for, first of all, Curtis, thank you for saying that. I really want to, again, go back to the leadership of this board, especially coming out condemning these acts in April of last year, and the leadership of Dr. Sikoli and Dr. Lake and all of our DLT members by simply saying, we condemn this. It's not going to be tolerated. And I want to make sure it's clear to the rules. You touched us, and just know you're not alone. And anyone out there in earsight, you can hear us as a board, as a collective community, you're not alone. We stand together.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions or thoughts? Maybe I'll just add, I, I, you know, this, this is obviously at the heart of our values. So again, I think we on the board appreciate, Dr. Favor, you and the team and all the staff getting together to kind of affirm this, this philosophy, this position, this value. Because as we know, it's not only the big horrible things that make the front pages of the newspapers that, that count. It's, it's also working to eliminate the little small things, the one-on-one interactions, the, the look of the face, the roll of the eye, the, the dismissive demeanor, or whatever it may be. So again, thank you, and, and thank to all the staff again for the continued diligence around, around this. So thank you very much. Kitty?
I just wanted to say that it sounds as though a lot of this is built on the foundation that you've been working on the whole district, but especially you, Dr. Favor, to help with these story circles and, and addressing them. And it just shows how powerful it is to have that foundation so that when issues occur, we have a, a vehicle and a means to support staff that are having challenging experiences. So thank you.
Thank you for acknowledging that. And I want to be real clear. When you say me, I'm really thinking and saying out loud, we. Dr. Sikoli, Dr. Lake, everyone in earsight, our teachers, our support staff, it's a collective we. And the more that we can be vocal and make sure people are clear that this is unacceptable, that it's not going to happen in our district, and we're not going to be silent around it, I think, sends a clear message and a collective we. So I really want to thank you for saying that and sharing that.
Yep, just to kind of echo everything everybody has said. Thank you, Dr. Favor. Thank you to the staff here. And I do like the fact, Dr. Favor, you brought up that what we passed in April of 2020, the resolution, that we were on this a year ago, when, when the pandemic started. And some pretty hateful and hurtful rhetoric was directed towards our friends, our Asian-American and Pacific Islander friends in the community. We were on this a year ago. And I think if there's anything more that we need to do, and later recent events, please bring it to our attention. I'm sure we'll jump on it if we need to strengthen anything. Just let us know. I, I think we'd, we'd be here to help you out or help us all out, so.
Thank you. All right, moving on. I, I know we have some guests with us, so we want to proceed quickly through the rest of the agenda, but I have had a few requests to take a short break. We've been going a little over two hours and a quarter, so I'm going to use my prerogative to do that. Let's take a three-minute break and then reconvene and move directly into the action items section of tonight's agenda. Thank you. Three minutes, please, everyone. Thank you. Anytime, just go ahead and do it, because we'll start to come back on Wayne one by one, so.
Chair Bogushevsky, would you like me to introduce?
No. No, they speak after, oh, that's time, yeah. But it's after the board acts.
Thank you.
But yeah, it'd probably be appropriate for you to introduce them, right?
Would you like me to do so now, Dr. Sikoli, or wait a bit?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Would you like me to introduce them now?
Now, I think what we'll do is we'll do the action, and then once we've voted, then we'll introduce and, and have them come on.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, I think the, I think we're all back. So we will pick up where we left off. Welcome back, everyone. And we are ready to move into our action items for this evening. And first up, and I believe Dr. Sikoli will introduce this topic, is the naming of the new Roseville Area High School Performing Arts Center. Aldo, please take it away.
Well, thank you, Chair Bogushevsky. It's certainly an honor for me to present an administrative recommendation based on school board guidance of the naming of two facilities that are still under construction. We'll start, as you said, with the, what will be the new Performing Arts Center at Rosevalerie High School. So the school board administration discussed a process for naming the new Performing Arts Center at Rosevalerie High School during a work-study session on September 10 of 2019. During the February 23, 2021 regular school board meeting, administration recommended naming the facility after former Superintendent Dr. John Tyne. Further discussion was held on March 16, 2021 during the work-study session. Now, Dr. Tyne, who I admire greatly, was the Rosevalerie School Superintendent for 17 years from 1998 to 2015, and also held other esteemed positions in the district for many years before that. He's one of the longest-serving superintendents, along with M.D. Williams and Lloyd C. Nielsen. And so to honor his contribution to the district, administration is proposing naming the new Performing Arts Center at Rosevalerie High School, the John J. Tyne Performing Arts Center.
Thank you, Aldo. Any discussion, or does someone want to go ahead and simply move this and second it, and then we can chat and invite Dr. Tyne to speak? Kitty?
I move on naming the facility as the John J., Dr. John Day Tyne facility as proposed.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Clerk Johnson, would you want, do we have any, let's go ahead and take the, well, do we want to discuss? Let's just take the vote, and then we can invite Dr. Tyne to speak. I think that's the appropriate way to do it. Clerk Johnson, take the roll call?
Of course. Director Shaw?
Aye.
Director Chu?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Treasurer Goggins?
Aye.
Chair Bogushevsky?
Aye.
Clerk Johnson votes aye.
All right. Passed unanimously. Aldo, would you want to say anything else, or let's just give the floor to John and see what he thinks of all of this?
I'm just, I just say I'm just so grateful for all John has done for the district. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Tyne.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. First of all, I'd like to tell you how much I appreciate this very meaningful action that you've taken tonight. What was even more meaningful for me tonight was to attend the board meeting and to hear you as a board and as administrative leaders of this district to continue to bring forward the mission, the vision, and the values of this district, and to put kids, community, staff before individual self. And it made me very, very proud to be just a small part of this wonderful organization. And it made me very, very proud to be just a small part of this wonderful organization. I want to thank each of you, new board members, senior board members, and you senior board members probably know who you are, for your kind, kind action. I'd like to recognize the administration, especially Dr. Sikoli. I know this wouldn't have happened without him, and I want to thank him personally. And I want to wish him well in his retirement and Godspeed to him. And I also want to recognize our new superintendent, Dr. Lake, who I admire greatly and have strong affection for. This has been a wonderful experience, and 27, over 27 years of my life have been spent in this district and in this community. And I'm glad to see I won't go away. And one thing that was really kind of interesting, my son was especially excited about this because his name is John Tyne. And so he's walking around Washington right now telling everybody he has a building named after him. So it's very, it's very much a treat, and I'm very grateful. There are three people that I started with in 1988 when I walked in the door. Jan Vanderwall, Barb Anderson, and Mary Zikarris. And they all played an absolute vital part in any success that I've had. And I always will remember that I stand on the shoulders of others, and I'm grateful for their support and guidance, which made things work well. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Tyne. Anyone want to add on besides just the clapping? Maybe I'll say, what's exciting to me is, as I see the photos as they're laid out here, is a kind of three generations of superintendents, where we have Dr. Tyne, your legacy, Dr. Sikoli, and all the wonderful work he did, some of which I think we've seen evidence of even today in terms of the equity vision, the CTE stuff, everything else that kind of really either he started or took off under him from your roots. And as we look forward for Dr. Lake to pick up those things and kind of shape them and shift them to the needs of the future as we move forward. So very well deserved for you, John, and thank you so much. As a personal note, you know, who'd have thought we'd have been here looking at each other this way all those years ago when I was a parent on a parent committee testifying side by side with you at the legislature to help bring Harambe into the district and that successful effort that you led and your passion for that and for creating Tri-District to begin with even years earlier. So again, a great, a great foundation, a great roots around equity and equitable education for all. And, and when we see where that's come now from your start and how you guided it and through the maturing of that under Dr. Sikoli and where we look forward to, I'm just, it just thrills me beyond belief. So thank you for, for, for your service and what you did and for being a model and inspiration to so many, not just in our district, but I think around the state. So many districts say, wow, John Tyne was the model. You know, we know you were called upon even by St. Paul to, to sit in a seat for a little while. So your reputation is, is widespread and, and very well deserved. So thank you very much. All right. With that, I think we'll move to the next item. And very similarly, I believe Superintendent Sikoli are also going to lead us into this, which is the naming of the Fairview Education Center.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bogushevsky. As I said earlier, really quite an honor to do so. So the school board administration discussed a process for naming the new building, the existing Fairview Education Center site during a work-study session on September 10th, 2019. During the February 23rd, 2021 regular school board meeting, administration recommended giving the facility an American Indian name. Further discussion was held on March 16th, 2021 during the work-study session. The district acknowledges that our school buildings, our district center, and our community are located on land that was seized from the Dakota people. Our district is only 13 miles away from one of the most sacred sites for the native people of Minnesota, where the Mississippi and Minnesota rivers meet. The Dakota called that place Padote. European settlement and colonization denied native people free and unhindered access to the land. In tribute to the Dakota, you know, Ojibwe people of Minnesota, the administration is proposing naming the new building Abetu Tetcha Education Center. In Dakota, Abetu Tetcha means new day. This name was chosen in collaboration with our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee and Dakota elders. So with that.
Thank you, Superintendent. So maybe we'll do the same thing. We can move and, and vote on this and then invite our guests to participate. I know Clerk Johnson, you've been so involved as the board liaison with the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee and making some of these happen. I guess I'd invite you, if you'd like to make the initial motion on this.
It would be my genuine pleasure. I move that we name the building formerly known as Fairview to Abetu Tetcha Education Center.
I'll second.
Wonderful. Thank you, Todd. With that, Curtis, why don't you take the vote?
Director Shaw?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Chu?
Aye.
Treasurer Goggins?
Aye.
Chair Bogushevsky?
Aye.
Clerk Johnson votes aye.
Passes unanimously. And with that, Aldo, did you want to pass it on? Or Dr. Favor, will you be introducing our, our guests? Who do we go to with this now?
Let's go to Dr. Favor next, please.
Excellent. Mike, please take the floor.
Be really brief. As many of you experienced the last time we were together, special leader in our community, who will not take. What I've learned mostly from Rhonda, Rhonda Russo is never about me or her. It's about the collective we. The opportunity to sit back and learn from Rhonda. And being a part of this committee has really helped me grow as a leader and as an educator. So I want to acknowledge her and her leadership and how she is holding, currently holding the committee together, and her sacrifices and doing for. And even the story circle motto that we're modeling for my professional development is rooted in indigenous practices. So I just want to introduce Rhonda Russo and our American Indian Cultural Liaison, Natalia Shabazz.
Amy, Board, Board Chair Bogushevsky, Superintendent Sikoli, and Board members. We just want to inform you guys that we're grateful for you guys accepting the name in front of the Dakota. And Rhonda wants to give you guys a quiz as far as the correct pronunciation of it. I'm going to hold that in top for a second.
Yes. So I, 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 I just wanted to see who all remembers how to say it. Aside from Curtis, so good job, Curtis. So if, no, it is, it is definitely an honor. And, you know, it is, it's, I just want to say that it's very humbling to be in this position. I myself, I'm originally from South Dakota. So to be in this position and to be a spokesperson for the young generations, this is such an honor. And to even go back to the families and just share this piece with them. And, you know, they can share it with the rest of their families. This is huge. So I got to be a part of the land acknowledgement last year, which was definitely huge. And to be a part of this and with whatever changes that we all continue to make, you know, that's, that's what we can continue to do is just make changes. So thank you.
So just a heads up, we plan to be in collaboration with the U of, U of M Minnesota Dakota Studies more as we, you know, continue with the new American Indian program. Also, we plan to do a groundbreaking ceremony, so we'll be in collaboration with that as far as once the building, you know, starts, I believe it's next fall, but I'm not for sure. But, um, but we'll all be in contact with that to get that going and to engage with the elders and also the Dakota instructor at the U of M.
Well, yes. Mike, may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So definitely let us know. And we will be there. I'm also going to, uh, take a moment to, to, to echo some of the comments, Dr. Favor. Rhonda Russo has been a joy to, to, to work with. And it's, uh, we, we've not always been able to, 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 to give you what, what, what you, what you, what you asked for. But, but we, I, I think we all worked very hard to, to, to give you what we can. And, and, uh, I, I look forward to our continued collaboration. So thank you for making time for, with us today.
Absolutely, and thank you.
Well, and I think we have great appreciation to you and the group and the, the, the folks from, who had input from the, from the tribe and members of the tribe and the elders and all of this, because it's a very serious undertaking. I think that as we've reflected on this, even over the last several days, you know, it's an honor, but it's beyond an honor. It's really an opportunity to be, to reveal a little bit for the curious. You know, the wise and metaphors of, of the name itself and why we're doing it really reveals and exposes a history which many may not know or may not be aware of or that has been suppressed. And so I think it's a real learning opportunity, and the name will be there as a forever reminder and, and spark for folks to say, hey, what, what's that about? What's going on there? And learn some of the, the truths that are out there from, from a perspective that, that may not have been delivered to most Minnesotans historically, most white Minnesotans. So it is, it is very important to us to do this. So we really appreciate you and the committee and all those who were involved in getting us to this point tonight, because it's, it's been, it's, it's been something we've been, we've been hoping to get to for a long time. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for staying so long. I know we kept you very long. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Then I think with that, we move to our final action item, which is an adjustment to the 2122 calendar that will be shared with us by Dr. Lake. Dr. Lake, welcome.
Good evening again. The calendar item we can't stop talking about. This evening, I bring to you a recommendation from the district calendar committee that officially Tuesday, September 7th, will become a non-student contact day due to Rosh Hashanah, following, following on the traditional first day of school. And we're recommending a change simply to our professional development calendar for a traditional school year, the movement of February 11th PD to September 7th. And noting that the year-long calendar at Harambe, the movement would be December 3rd to September 7th. And that is supported by our EMR, District Calendar Committee, and the community at Harambe.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Lake? Then I would just entertain a motion.
I'm moved.
Second.
Great. Any further discussion? Kitty?
If we have a professional development day on that day, how does that work with our staff who are of the Jewish faith?
We'll continue to support staff who choose to take that day off per the teacher contract and their faith. And we're also really excited for professional development in a similar way of last year that we had lots of staff choice and the sessions were recorded and often virtually. And we anticipated doing sessions sometimes in person and also virtually next fall.
Great. Thank you.
Right.
And maybe I just have a comment too. I think that one of the things for those who may be watching tonight or follow the minutes of this, it's not simply that the day is Rosh Hashanah. It's that it's Rosh Hashanah coinciding with the first day of school. Because normally, a, a random day through the year, parents and families always have the option to do what they need to do regarding religious observance or attending services to their faith or whatever. But, you know, to miss that day even voluntarily means you miss a lot of important things because it is day number one. And I think Dr. Lake, you had calculated out and anticipate that the next time that this concur was not until something like 2048, if I'm seeing correctly. So it is a, a rare circumstance. I know we are joined in this action by, at last count, I think, what, 15 or 20 different districts around the state of Minnesota who, who have seen the same thing. So I think we've all come to agree it's the right thing to do. And really thank you and the committee for convening again when you had thought your work was done for this calendar and helping through all the hoops to get days that people could agree to, which I know is not easy to do. So appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any, any further questions? Being none, Clerk Johnson, could you take the vote on this change?
Director Chu?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Shaw?
Aye.
Treasurer Goggins?
Aye.
Chair Bogushevsky?
Aye.
Clerk Johnson votes aye.
All right. Thank you all. We're done with action items. We will now hear Director Anderson share with us the report of our last study session. Todd?
Hey, thank you. Our study session on March 16th started out with something we just discussed, starting out with the discussion around adjusting the start date for school next year. The first day of school falls on the first day of Rosh Hashanah. Our district calendar committee has recommended that the start of school be pushed back one day to Wednesday, September 8th. It was noted in our discussion that at least 25 other school districts will also be making this change. We, as a district, still need to determine where to replace the school day, and this would be discussed at our next school board meeting, which was tonight. So our next topic was around the naming of new facilities. With final board approval, the new Roseville area high school performing arts center will become the John J. Tyne Performing Arts Center, named after former longtime superintendent John Tyne. The new Fairview building will become the Abetu Tetcha Education Center. Appropriately honor, I did it, to appropriately honor the indigenous people and history of the land that the new building will be on. In the Dakota language, it means a new day. And it came about after fully consulting with and listening to tribal leaders in our district's American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Discussions have started around some kind of ceremony for the opening of the John J. Tyne Performing Arts Center. And we will be consulting with tribal leaders in our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee regarding the appropriate ritual blessing and naming ceremony for the Abetu Tetcha Education Center. More information will be forthcoming. The board moved on to a discussion around the Page Amendment, which is a proposed Minnesota constitutional amendment regarding education named after former Minnesota Supreme Court Justice Alan Page. The board was given information around the intent of the amendment and what the process has been up to, up to this point. An important upcoming community conversation, co-hosted by school board member Dr. Rose Chu, will provide an opportunity for community members to ask questions about the Page Amendment. Our board did not pass any resolution at the study session, but we did agree overall with the amendment's intent and the need for a strong commitment by the state to provide a quality public education for all children, and the need to have better educational outcomes. Last but not least, the board had a discussion regarding who should be the board rep for the upcoming teacher negotiations team and process. Clerk Johnson volunteered to represent the school board, while Director Anderson will be the alternate. So that is my report. I do want to let folks know that I did write part of this report, much of it, before our meeting this evening. So was not trying to just rehash what others have said. So I did write this in advance, but thank you.
Well, no, but that's entirely appropriate, because the point is to let the public know what we did discuss generally at that study session. So even if it seems repetitious, it's, it's the right way to do it. So thank you very much. With that, we have board reports. So anyone have some stuff they'd like to share with us tonight? Frank?
Briefly, a lot has been happening at 9:16. I would have, I would have given you a good, long run on that last week or two weeks ago if I'd been there. But just a second, I've got a, can you get that, Ruth? Okay, sorry about that. Anyway, we've been over the, over the month of March, working pretty hard at, at finding a new superintendent for, for the 916 and that process culminated last Wednesday, it was last, yes, last Wednesday in the elevation of Dr. Val Rae Bo, who is assistant superintendent there to the superintendency of that district. Val has worked in, in 916 for 15 years, served as a principal of one of the elementary schools and has also been an assistant superintendent for a while. The other thing is I wanted to mention is that Karen Schaub was generous and took me around Abedu Tetcha, the building. And I got to see, I got to see it from the inside. I've been walking by and looking at it from the outside for a while. And it is really a magnificent facility. I think we're going to be very proud of that place and it's going to change a lot of people's lives. And I'm just highly impressed at the way it's come out. And I think we really have done the right thing to make a new building rather than try to adapt the old building, which was really not suited for the things that will be happening there in Abedu Tetcha. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anyone else? Kitty?
I had three things I wanted to update you on. Director Johnson and I, as well as Dr. Lake and others, had an opportunity to attend a presentation by sixth graders at Emmett D. Williams for why styrofoam hurts the environment and as, as in our school should move away to switch to reusable trays. And each small group did their presentation on the topic. And it was very impressive to see the kind of research they did in preparation. The ideas they had and how they tried to think of objections or issues and then had responses to those, to those issues. And it was just a really exciting and fun thing to do. And it's the first time I've been back in a school building for quite a while. So I really, really enjoyed it. And our director of nutrition services, Angela Ritchie was there. And she was able to tell the students that next year Emmett Williams will be going to cut compostable trays. So they won't have the styrofoam, but they're unable to get everything set up to get to the fully reusable tray until a little bit later. I think it was a year or two before that school in particular. But this is happening across the district in terms of moving away from the styrofoam. And that was really exciting to hear. So that was really fun. And it was really the critical thinking that went into it. What, it was just a great assignment to illustrate the kinds of things we want our students to learn. I had an opportunity to attend the unstuck session that was put on by our leaders in training. And I really recommend, it is, those students are so thoughtful and so a lot of preparation goes into these sessions and all community members are invited. And this particular one was around kind of self-awareness in your own self-image. And was around seeing value in yourself. Is, is so critical and low self-esteem really puts a cap on one's performance. And talked about, you know, self-awareing, awareness being that we need to be, you know, to first know yourself. You must always get along with yourself. If somebody causes a problem, it's yourself is the first person to look at. And a first person I must change is myself. And I just thought that was a neat quote that they shared. I really recommend it for community members and others. Dr. Socoli was there as well. And I just really thought they do a dynamite job. And then I wanted to thank Rose for her co-hosting with others, the session on the constitutional amendment. I thought that there were some great presentations and some new material shared there that I found very helpful. And I'm really glad I attended it. So thank you.
Bruce?
Okay. Kitty beat me to EDW. But I, I will just, just echo pretty much everything she said. Cameron Ratkey's sister, I believe was the combination fifth in this great class. Had wonderfully insightful ideas and great presentation. And I, I, I think the thing that, that one of the things that impressed me was that she, Cameron Ratkey is, is, is teaching her students how to advocate. And I, I, I think that's, that's important, whether, whether that's advocating to a, a, a school board, advocating to your parents, advocating for yourself. It, it all starts at, at this, this young age. And this whole idea came from a lunch conversation. So this, this wasn't something, this wasn't something, this truly was a bottom or bottom up kind of thing. They were having lunch and someone said, you know, sick and tired of these styrofoam trays. When you get rid of them. And that just led to a couple of weeks of working on this idea, this idea. And it was just very impressive. So teachers never cease to amaze me. I going to give an update on the social studies standards committee, which met again about a week ago. So took a little break, but, but now the group is going to be meeting every two weeks or so in order to get draft version two out by the first of June, which will then be followed by four weeks for people to give their, give their thoughts. The, the, the first version just concentrated on the standards. The second draft will concentrate on the benchmarks. So it'll be a more complete document. So I'm looking forward to, to getting that out. Normally I would have attended the leaders in training. Cause I'm a, I'm a big, the unstuck series, I'm a big fan of the unstuck series and a big fan of the leaders in training. But as, as we all are so often, I got double booked, but I was very happy to be double booked this time because I, I, I got to attend a, a round table virtually with Asian elected officials and our very own Director Chu was a part of that. And she represented the district masterfully as she always does. And so I would just like to take the opportunity to publicly thank her for, for, for her work and everything that she does as part of you know, school board member and, and outside of it. So, and that's, that's all I have.
Curtis. Anyone else? Rose?
For, thank you Curtis for, for that acknowledgement. And I just want to clarify that round table was by our attorney general, Keith Allison. And it was titled stopping AAPI hate. So it was his way to really bring together all the elected, many of the Asian-American elected officials. I was the only educator on that panel. So I definitely want to make sure that, you know, I, 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 I mentioned about how education has to be part of the solution. And in terms of what it means to stop hate, not to stop it after the fact, but also think about what education's role is in curriculum in who we train, who we bring to, to school and, and how do we treat our staff, students and families? So that was my message. And, and, and thank you Kitty. And I know others were there too. I couldn't remember who else was there in, in, in the page amendment thing. That was an honor to really host that. We had like over, I don't know, like 66 people signed on. Some of them probably learning for the first time what it is. So it was a great opportunity for the community to hear. Hopefully this will not be the last. It's really the beginning of a conversation. So I appreciate that. And I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm like, like, like back together so to speak to able to speak because it was interesting. I, it was a surprise to me. Thanks to Superintendent Socoli, I, I learned about some of the efforts that were going on to support our AAPI staff, students and family. As I was getting ready in my head to make sure that if that question comes up, that I understand what Roseville is doing. And yet to hear it publicly presented by Dr. Favor just got me, just totally got me. And so I wanted to thank you everyone for the space and for the support for this effort. And, and, and I have to say for someone who's been an immigrant for 40 years in US, discrimination against the AAPI community didn't just happen as a result of the rhetoric of the, of the virus. Actually has been historically happening, but it just got heightened lately. So, so really it's just brought up a lot of things and incidents that I've, I've experienced myself. And so it's, it's very heartfelt to know that I'm in a district that this is taken seriously that as a board, we are addressing it to the resolution we did last April and continue to have amazing ways that we are supporting the community. So thank you. I just needed to say that publicly. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? The only thing I have is I did attend as a stand-in for Kitty, the special ed advisory committee. There are only a couple of parents there. I think that one of the, one of the topics and they're going to work on it. And then Kitty, I know they've probably talked about it with you also. It's just really how to communicate out just the existence of that group and how it can be helpful and beneficial to, you know, anyone really, you know, with family, friends, whatever of special ed kids and special needs kids. So part of that, I think, of course, is just the pandemic and what's going on and the uncertainty. But you know, they're going to try to still hold monthly meetings next year. And just get the attendance up and just let parents know that it exists as a forum. The meeting the other day, the guest speaker was actually the school nurse and talked about the various things in place around COVID or just in health in general, just sharing to make sure that the special ed parents who were a part of the group could hear that and know how to access services and, and what goes on there. So that's the only thing I had. Unless I missed someone, I think we're done with board reports and can move to Dr. Socoli's superintendent report. Aldo.
Thank you, Chair Bogushevsky. So again, I do want to thank the community for passing the bond referendum in November 2017. And we continue to be on time and within budget on construction projects. So it's, it's great to see the last phases underway. And of course is providing Roseville area schools with modern facilities and updated infrastructure. And as we're updating those facilities, obviously we need to look towards having the resources to provide a superb education that will bring us back to better after the pandemic subsides. And as was related earlier in our presentation, a lot of people don't understand the difference between bond funds and operating referendum funds. So bond is for buildings, levies are for learning. So what was approved by the voters and we're very grateful for in 2017 are for those facility projects that are progressing nicely. And then the operating referendum, we were discussing earlier in the meeting for the fall is about operating the schools, having the staff, the supports, the other things needed to actually educate the students within the buildings. Our current, as people know, our current operating levy will expire. Voters do not renew it in November 2021. The board's been talking about this for some time and our students definitely need more stable funding for their schools. We have been good stewards by enacting substantial budget reductions in recent years. There is a real need for increased operating revenue. We also understand that the pandemic has increased financial challenges. And so we look forward to how we resolve this challenge for the school district with the help of our community going forward so that we can have a better education well into the future that's sustainable. Then lastly, I would like to congratulate Assistant Superintendent Dr. Michael Favor, who last night was selected as the next superintendent of intermediate district 917. Thank you.
Thank you. I think with that, we've concluded our business for this evening. So we are adjourned.